Good morning, Mr. Clerk. Do we have a quorum?
Yes, Madam Speaker, we have quorum.
I call this special meeting of City Council for June 2, 2025, to order and acknowledge that we're on Treaty I territory, the home and traditional lands of the Anishnaabe, the Inunu, and the Dakota Peoples, and in the national homeland of the Red River Métis. Our drinking water comes from Sho Lake 40, First Nation, in Treaty III territory. Ro call, Madam Clerk.
Madam Speaker, Counselor Sharma, His Worship Mayor Gillingham, Counselors Allard, Brawadi, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, Edie, Gilroy, Luchs, Mays, Orliko, Rollins, Santos, and Wyatt.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you read the notice for today's special meeting into the record?
In accordance with Section 79.1 of the City Winnipeg Charter, a special meeting of council has been called for Monday, June 2, 2025, at 9:30 a.m. in the Council Chamber, Council Building, 510 Main Street, to consider the following: Public hearings, 9:30 a.m. Text Amendment Amendment to the Winnipeg Zoning Bylaw, Number 200 of 2006, to allow as-of-right residential development of new two-unit, three-unit, and four-unit dwellings under File DAZ 209 of 2025; Number 2 Secondary Plan Application to Convert the Dawson Trail Precinct J Plan to a Secondary Plan Bylaw, SP 2 of 2025; Number 3 Secondary Plan Application to Convert the North Point Village Precinct F Plan to a Secondary Plan Bylaw, SP 3 of 2025; Number 4 Secondary Plan Application to Convert the Waterford Green Precinct C Plan to Secondary Plan Bylaw, SP 4 of 2025; Number 5 Secondary Plan Amendment to Complete Communities Direction Strategy 2.0 and 21 Secondary Plans, SPA 3 of 2025. Pursuant to the requirements of the City Winnipeg Charter, no other subject or matter other than outlined in this notice shall be considered at the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is a special meeting of council, as noted, and the second time that council will be acting as a hearing body. The Development Procedures Bylaw sets out the general rules of procedure for conducting public hearings for development applications, which are typically held by community committees, standing committees, and executive policy committee. Council will be generally following that same process for today's hearings. We are joined today by members of the public service, our city clerk's team, our CAO, Mr. Sherwood Armbruster, public service from the Planning, Property and Development Department, Hazel Boris, our director, James Veach, manager of urban planning and design, Robert Kostcheck, senior planner, and Alyssa Rappaport, manager Housing Accelerator Fund. We do have members of the public service online, Dylan Harris, chief zoning officer, Evan Allen, planner, Mike Pill, growth management coordinator. The public service has requested to present after the applicant instead of before, which is permitted under the Development Procedures Bylaw. Mr. Mayor, would you like to move that motion that we change the order to allow the public service to present after the applicant?
So moved, Madam Speaker.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried. We will then begin by hearing from the applicant, which for this hearing will be John Kirnann from the Chief Administrative Office. Following Mr. Kirnann's presentation, we'll hear from the public service, and then we will go into the public representations, hearing from people registered in support first, then opposition, followed by anyone registered for information. Joining Mr. Kirnann is Mr. Devon Clark, also from the Property and Development Department. The applicant will be permitted an opportunity for rebuttal to all comments made once all other representations are heard. Speaking time for all public representations will be limited to five minutes, as established by the Procedure Bylaw. If you have any questions of the representations or of the public service, please raise your hand, and I will call you when your turn comes up. We will acknowledge you when it's your opportunity to speak. As I said, there are no time restrictions for questions, and you may remain seated when speaking throughout the hearing. You can rise if you wish. I would like to remind all members of council that you must be present for the duration of the hearing. We will be breaking from noon to 1:30 for lunch today, and we will ensure there are appropriate breaks throughout the day. This hearing may continue over a number of days. A list of registered speakers has been published with the agenda and is available on our decision-making information system. This list is intended to be a guide so that speakers may have a better indication of when it is their turn to present, but is subject to change depending on the amount of people that registered at the hearing. Are there any questions before we proceed? Counselor Luchs?
No.
No questions. Okay, Mr. Clerk, will you, Madam, Mr. Clerk, yes, will you introduce the items?
Of course. In accordance with the City Winnipeg Charter, the Development Procedures Bylaw, the process that the hearing body will follow is that the applicant will be heard first, followed by the public service, who will provide an overview of the application and recommendations. We will there then hear from people registered in support of the application, followed by people registered in opposition, then those who registered for information. Finally, the applicant may return to speak in rebuttal to comments made, however, no new information is permitted at that time. Please note that when your name is called, it is your opportunity to speak, however, you are not obligated to do so. For more in-depth overview of the public hearing process and other information pertaining to what happens before, during, and after a public hearing, please consult the City Clerk's Department's website. Please note that all public hearings are recorded and will be part of the public record. Should you have any questions after the hearings have concluded, please contact the City Clerk's Department. Item number one is a text amendment to the Winnipeg Zoning Bylaw, Number 200 of 2006, to allow as-of-right residential development of new two-unit, three-unit, and four-unit dwellings under File DAZ 209 of 2005. In accordance with the City Winnipeg Charter and the Development Procedures Bylaw, this is a combined hearing, and the following items will also be heard at the same time. Item number two is a conversion of the Dawson Trail Precinct J Plan to the Secondary Plan Bylaw under File SP 2 of 2005. Item number three is the conversion of the North Point Village Precinct F Plan to Secondary Plan Bylaw under File SP 3 of 2005. Item number four is the conversion of the Waterford Green Precinct C Plan to the Secondary Plan Bylaw under File SP 2 of 2005. And item number five is a secondary plan amendment to the, yes, secondary plan amendments to Complete Communities Direction Strategy 2.0 and 21 additional secondary plans under File SPA 3 of 2025. Please note that all submissions received have been distributed to members of the hearing body, and as noted by the speaker, if any member of the hearing body has questions for the representations, please raise your hand and place yourself on the speaker's list.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselor Orliko, would you move a motion that jackets may be removed? It is quite hot in here today.
My pleasure. So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried. We'll now begin with hearing from Mr. John Kirnann and Mr. Devon Clark, who are acting as the applicant. Welcome. You have five minutes for your presentation.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Your Worship, Honorable Members of Council. It has come in traction, as we may need about 10 minutes, so I will rely on council's discretion as we move forward. This is a unique application and process. The purpose of the public hearing has been addressed. First reading on the amendments. It responds to items, five items of eight from council direction of November 2023. As we begin to discuss this matter today, I would acknowledge those who have been affected by the current environmental conditions outside our boundaries, who have been required to leave their homes, lost their homes, and our people who are in our municipality that are underhoused or unsheltered. Housing is a building block of our community in all of its forms. The zoning change is tabled today, much like the malls and corridors, is both about making it easier to build more types of housing in more locations. It is one tool out of many in addressing the housing supply in our country, and I would acknowledge council's leadership and direction that we are undertaking a multifaceted approach to address our housing needs. Today's amendment is one of those tools. Process. Today's a unique hearing related to process. The city is in the role of the applicant, the analyst, the entity which undertook the public engagement, a presenter, and also the adjudication body as an entity, the city. We are looking to separate those roles for clarity of purpose. Madam Speaker, address those. I am appearing today as, and I would use the CMHC language, as the City of Winnipeg's program sponsor for the Housing Accelerator Fund. I'm tabling the amendments. The public service will provide the details. With me, as noted, is Devon Clark. Many of you know Devon. He is an application planner with Planning, Property, and Development, but I would also acknowledge while I'm standing here, the heavy lifting being done by the members of the public service, and I would acknowledge their attendance and leadership on this matter. They are, in fact, the subject matter experts and will respond to your questions over the next day or two, or with apologies, perhaps three. It is their report. They will be available to you both after their presentation and during the public delegations. But before Devon and I step aside, we will set for you a bit of context regarding why we're here today. It's part of an ongoing process, so I think that's important. Hundreds of municipalities from across Canada applied. 175 municipalities secured housing accelerator funding. All of them have wrestled with similar issues to those being tabled here today. December 5, 2023, Government of Canada through the CMHC entered an agreement with the City of Winnipeg to contribute $122-plus million in funding over four years. The HALF program has eight distinct projects, probably 14 different initiatives underway. This is one of those initiatives. I would divide the others currently underway into two parts. Some are processes, some are projects. Internal processes, council direction was given to undertake an end-to-end review of the development permit process. That's currently at its midpoint, being led by the public service in collaboration with KPMG, and a report will be tabled this fall for council's consideration. The HALF team is currently working with audit to continue to improve and streamline internal processes and accountability, and partnerships are being developed with different levels of government and a number of independent non-profit provision of affordable housing. External projects, 23 projects, you're aware, it's been here, 23 projects have already received $50 million in HALF funding, and those commitments have assisted in unlocking $700 million of affordable housing. Other commitments have been made, both to North Portage and the Bay projects, and together they have a combined construction value of $950 million. The HALF funding is a small piece of those projects, much more relevant in those 23 others. Those projects are creating 2,500 new units of housing and will be initiated next year. Almost half of them are affordable. In January, council approved multi-family grant of $12 million to support 1,200 units of high-density, sustainable, multi-family housing where existing infrastructure can't support new development, and currently, expressions of interest have just been received for five city properties. They are being adjudicated at the current time for 600 more units. Many of those will be affordable. Coming next, over the next series of months, will be small lock strategies, a supportive housing plan, and a request for proposals to update our zoning bylaw citywide. These initiatives are undertaken by council and funded via HALF. There is no single silver bullet to housing, and that's, this is one of those tools that you're wrestling here today. I'll turn the podium over to Devon, and Madam Speaker, if I may ask for an extension?
Thank you. Time has concluded. Counselor Luchs moves extension of five minutes. That requires suspension of the rules. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried. Welcome, Devon Clark.
Thank you, John. Thank you, council. The applications before you today look to address a federal housing direction in the Winnipeg context. The Housing Accelerator Fund is designed to increase housing supply, speed up the rate of development, and increase the number of affordable units available in Winnipeg. On November 12, 2023, council approved an eight-point action plan to help us address these issues in Winnipeg. Of those eight recommendations approved, the following five points are most relevant today. This includes: Point one, council affirmed its support for the Housing Accelerator Fund application. Point two, that the HALF application be amended to legalize four dwelling units per residential lot as-of-right citywide. Point three, that the HALF application be amended to legalize four units, up to four stories as-of-right within 800 meters of high-frequency transit corridors, as outlined in the city's HALF application and informed by the initial network changes in Phase 1 of the Winnipeg Transit Master Plan. Point five, that as-of-right approvals specified in Recommendations 2, 3, and 4 be contingent upon applicable zoning and bylaw changes that are subject to a public hearing prior to enactment, and upon reasonable standards for construction, servicing, and design, consistent with standards adopted or projected in other cities with completed HALF agreements. And point eight, that the Development Procedures Bylaw be amended to designate council as the hearing body for the required zoning bylaw amendments. The proposed amendments tabled today include changes to the zoning bylaw, existing plan development overlays, or PDOs, and secondary plans. The proposed zoning changes would apply to most residential zones, including R1 residential single-family, R2 residential two-family, and RMFS residential multi-family small, and could allow as-of-right residential development of new two, three, and four-unit dwellings, pending the qualification of other criteria such as pipe capacities, lot dimensions, building heights, yard setbacks, lot coverage, and various other site and building design criteria. Amendments to five existing plan development overlays are proposed, primarily with respect to bringing them into alignment with the proposed zoning changes to enable two, three, and four-unit dwellings, and amendments to the Complete Communities Direction Strategy 2.0, 21 secondary plans, and three non-statutory secondary plans are also proposed in order to align with the proposed zoning bylaw amendments.
Thank you, Devon. I'd also note that there are other alignments that this report and these amendments bring us into. We meet criteria of other funding sources. That would include, and it doesn't address all of the criteria in these other funding sources, but addresses some critical ones, related to the Canada Public Transit Fund, of course, the Housing Accelerator Fund, the Canada Community Building Fund, peripherally, and very directly, the Canadian Housing Infrastructure Fund, also known as CHIF. In CHIF, the requirement is very clear. Municipalities are required to adopt zoning for four units as-of-right per lot in all low-density residential areas with municipal servicing. While this allows and will allow access federal dollars for critical infrastructure investment to come to our municipality in our province. While it allows access to those funds, it also builds on existing municipal infrastructure, pipes, roads, community centers, libraries, and services, and it creates opportunities where people already live, where their services physically exist. Does it have challenges? Absolutely. And those challenges, potential solutions will be discussed today. There will be people to make comment. The department will give more nuanced context around what those challenges are and how they're being addressed. We have sought, and as Devon noted, the shape of the unit of housing that's going on a lot, its shape, its form, its setbacks, its height, its density, those densities that are associated. We've sought to balance a national requirement and a program in our municipal context, and that's a balance and a line that has been walked, I think, in the report and in the proposed amendments. Madam Speaker, we're aware the public service is authors of the report. They have a presentation to share. However, as noted, staff from the department are here. They're the SMEs, the subject matter experts. We're also available for questions. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. We'll take questions now. Counselor Mays, Counselor Wyatt, and Counselor Luchs.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, it's been a long road to get here, and here we finally are, and it may be a long hearing, but I think it's an important matter. So I'll have several questions. I'll probably stand for them. You've already indicated we can sit, but firstly, I want to thank Devon and Richard Mahay, who isn't here, for their work on the infill guidelines back in 2021, which Counsel Gilroy helped steer through council. So that's kind of a formative document here, obviously not entirely, but council did reference the infill guidelines back in 2023. So I once said to Richard, I didn't think I was doing his career any good by continuing to praise him, and he said, you know, that's okay. I'll live with the praise. So, so context is important here, as you're saying, John. So, number of questions. So, the, the original application from the City of Winnipeg to the HALF program, which I voted for, I think we all voted for, was July 2023. It didn't reference the fourplexes. It didn't reference the threeplexes, right? It certainly had a number of amendments to current guidelines, but the fourplex requirement is, as you say, from the federal government, the CHIF and the HALF.
Correct. Sorry, Counselor, yes. Self-evident, yes.
Okay. What, what was in that original application, which you can find online and in the FAQ page that came out a year later, was saying affordable housing units, affordable units, 25% was our target there, right? I mean, that was, that was what we were after, was 25%, one out of four affordable units. In the end, we're not quite at that at our current rate, but we're at somewhere 9% or something, I think, in terms of how things are progressing.
Right.
And you talked about North Portage, some other big projects, malls and corridors. To be fair to both sides here, I think we'd say that's, that's not what we're debating. I'm not voting yes or no on North Portage, and, and you might well say, well, if you vote all this down, you jeopardize some hundreds of millions in funding, and we're using that toward infrastructure and housing. So is that a fair characterization?
Yeah, I would separate the two, Counselor, and I would have perhaps restate that comment I made into those are projects already underway.
Right. So all we're debating really here is...
Two threes and fours.
Two threes and fours. And we won't get into the nuance of this four units, I mean, the same as up to four units. I think we'll play that out over the course of the next couple of days. So we get monthly reports from Mr. Mahay and, and yourself, I guess, and Ms. Rappaport, I think, about progress under the HALF. One of the categories is missing middle housing, which is defined as buildings with two, three, or four units. When we approved the plan for 14,000 more units back in 2023, 2023, the target was 1,026 units of missing middle. We're, we are, according to Mr. Mahay's latest numbers, 30% above that already. We're, we're at 1,300 units-ish of, of the missing middle.
Yes, and a number of those were a reporting change that occurred. One of those changes was we were allowed to include single-family homes that had a secondary suite or residence within it. So that adjusted some of those numbers that we weren't expecting. I would also flag, just for, again, we're dealing with context at the start of the hearing, is that some of those are in the zone for the rapid transit, where we are lower than we anticipated, so we may move them, with all due respect to statisticians everywhere, from the missing middle category over to, within proximity to frequent transit. So the, it's, but the aggregate is, is correct.
But, yeah, certainly, we, even without the whole fourplex step here, we're already 13, 15 months into a 36-month program, we're already over our target by 30% on missing middle. Nothing, nothing we do here today will be crucial to meeting the target. We've met the target.
That target has been met.
In fact, where we're behind is on the rapid transit number a bit, but we're really behind on single-family, right? The single-family number, the target was 300, 3,994. We need that built in the three years, and we were at 900, some 927. So we're, we're about 3,000 short on single-family homes, and we're, we're over already on the missing middle.
Well, and, and part of that is that balance between what's being built where, at what time. And so there may be some more nuanced answer. I don't know if Lucy Rappaport, who's the HALF manager, would like to speak to it or not. So that might be a question I would defer to the public service.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Mays. Anything further?
Oh, yeah. Be fair.
We can come back to you as well, if you wish.
Oh, good. John won't want me to keep going here. We are, the, the annual HALF report on Page 2, that indicates we're, we're ahead of, I mean, you may differ that one as well. We're ahead of, we're, we're matching our pace. We're, we're...
We're on track.
We're on track.
Yeah.
Yeah, without, without, and we haven't approved any of the, the fourplex stuff here. Even without that, we're on track.
Correct.
Okay. The, one of the aspects, actually not, a few more questions, Madam Speaker, but we are entitled to ask. It's a public hearing. We can ask what we want. The infill guidelines had a provision, I guess, actually, I'll ask you first about, well, I'll give you some context here. The infill guidelines, and again, Devon and, and Richard were more the authorities there. The infill guidelines emphasized, well, required a back lane if you wanted to do a threeplex or a fourplex. And there was some wording about why that, why that was seen as preferable. Lots with direct access to a lane, and indebted to Counsel Allard here, who I think spotted this, lots with direct access to a lane minimize points of conflict with pedestrians, reduce sidewalk interruptions, provide more on-street parking, reduce snow clearing needs, protect the boulevard street trees, and support the pedestrian-friendly design of our mature neighborhood streets. So, well-written by whoever wrote that. So that was, we prefer these threes and fours. In fact, we mandated it to have back lanes. As you've indicated, we're colliding here with federal requirements and local preferences, perhaps, but we are not able, the federal government in Surrey said, yeah, go ahead and do the threes and fours. It has to, you have to have a back lane. The federal government apparently is not saying that to us here. They're saying, no, 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 even if you don't have a back lane, we still want you to do the fourplexes.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
By right, although I would say putting into, we're talking a lot about context this morning, although if you don't have a back lane, the front drive can be accommodated, but lot widths need to be adjusted to accommodate the density and site planning from that. And I believe the department has a number of good examples they'll walk through to show how that can be accommodated on 60-foot-wide lots, different from what can be accommodated with a drive, different from what can be accommodated with lots that only have a lane.
Right. So we'll come back to all that, but yeah, it's...
I feel you're leading me in a direction, Counselor, so I have...
Miss? You have, having a conversation. So, the federal government, there was a very fine chart prepared by, by staff about, here's how the cities have dealt with the threes and fours. Mr. Kostcheck gave me an exhaustive response. At least, in some parts of Halifax, the requirement, if you wanted to do a fourplex and you didn't have a lane, in some parts of Halifax, it was 70 feet, and it's a very convoluted answer, and Rob's done a good job tracking down. But I don't know if you want to refer that, but that's...
Yeah. There, there are some unique circumstances in the Halifax approvals, and I think Rob's probably the best person to speak. He, he did the deep dive and went down that rabbit hole to go, why they are not here as, as an appropriate context.
But, I mean, it's 70 feet in some situations.
Oh, yeah, it's substantial, and parts of Halifax do not have that as a restriction or requirement.
And, and the way the chair was presented, some cities, major cities who are in category one, minor cities or not-quite-so-major league cities were in category two. Halifax was down in two. I was told that they want us up in category ones, which I said, great, Surrey's in number one, that's the place where you have to have a back lane. But apparently, so all this sort of detail work, I mean, really, I think what we're saying here is we're not voting on North Portage today, we're not voting on hundreds of millions. We, if we, we need to vote on something that says fourplexes were appropriate, it's the detail. So what do you mean by the words appropriate? And, and the motion from 2023 indicated, you know, council can debate lot widths, heights, what we mean by urban service requirements, all that kind of stuff.
Counselor Mays, I can go to someone else, come back here, or do you have a question or two more at this time?
Yeah.
Okay. And the questions and answers will come through the chair, please. Just, thank you.
Yeah, two more for now, and then I'll come back later. That seems fair. HALF agreement, which we all got after the malls and corridors debate, that says in Article 12.3, "Nothing in this agreement will fetter the discretion of the recipient's elected council as to future decisions by the elected council. To the extent that future council approvals are required to implement any initiatives, it will be the responsibility of the recipient to ensure such council approvals are actively pursued." So we're here because we're up against a June 12 deadline. I think that's notorious, that's well-known. But certainly, there's still some council, ultimately, council will decide the, the requirements of what's appropriate, I guess.
Through, through the speaker? Yes, Counselor. It, it will be council's decision. The department and the public service has recommendations on how the national program can fit in the Winnipeg context.
Final question for now, Madam Speaker. So the, the infill guidelines had a provision that said, if you've got a single-family home, you can go, the, the lot width minimum is 25, if you have a back lane. is twenty-five, if you have a back lane. But if you don't have a back lane, it's fifteen feet bigger. It's, it's forty feet. And then we, we enshrined that in the vote in May twenty twenty-four on the, not the malls and corridors, but the previous piece, the, the ones, twos, and threes. So we, we said in that vote, yeah, if, if you've got, you've got a single-family home, you got a back lane, twenty-five feet wide gets it done. You don't have a back lane, you gotta have forty, fifteen feet more.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And then obviously, we'll come back to that. We're talking right now about fifty feet wide if you have a lane for fourplex. We're, we're not at this point saying you need fifteen more. Staff's saying ten. We can debate that. But just for consistency, we did say back a year ago, if, if there's, there's a difference, you should have a wider property if you don't have a lane. And we said, in fact, it's two-thirds bigger. It's, you're going from twenty-five to forty.
Madam Speaker, if I may, the proportionality of that ties in. And I think on smaller lots at twenty-five feet, which would be, you know, by right, a duplex would now be allowed, a, a main, a main house, a secondary suite. The reason for the extra width, it can be accommodated on fifty when it goes to sixty feet with the front drive. That was the intent. I think, Rob, you, you've done the deep dive, so the public service could speak to, to that in more detail.
Okay.
But it's, it's that proportionality of the wider you get, the less it has, less onerous it has to be.
Okay. But, but certainly, last year, we said, there's, there's, we're gonna add fifteen feet more to the lot width requirement if you don't have a back lane.
On the twenty-five foot, yes.
On a single foot. So it's not, it's actually sixty percent, it's not two-thirds. But thank you, Mr. Speaker. I may have some more, but thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mays.
John's been very good at responding to questions throughout this process.
Thank you. Councillor Wyatt?
John, you're aware of the city of Vancouver?
Councillor Wyatt, the questions and answers through the chair, please.
Yes. John, you're aware the city of Vancouver has been offering laneway housing for nearly twenty years now.
True, Madam Speaker. Yes, I am. We are aware, and they've done a pretty good job of it.
Yeah. And they're on gravelback lanes?
Some are.
Yeah? And the sky has fallen there?
To my understanding, Madam Speaker, no.
Okay, all right. The other question I have is, the federal government supplied how much to us?
Through the half-funding program, a hundred and twenty-two million point four.
Hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty-two point four?
It's in tranches of sixty million per year.
And that was announced when?
It was agreed to by contract December of twenty-three.
So that was the Trudeau government?
Yes.
Are you aware if the, the mayor is called, or have we asked for more, hearing Mr. Carney's comments recently on housing?
I can, I cannot speak to that, councillor, sorry. That would be a question for his worship.
Because one of the things I'm hearing is, projects are having a hard time getting ahead and going because of the cost of construction and everything else. Some of them, some of them are being delayed and possibly tanked because of the rising cost of doing business. Have you heard that?
The inflationary cycles have an impact. Lots of them are looking at their numbers. One of the cautions we've had is, and we've gone back to the ones that we're directly involved with funding, to make sure they're still aligned with their funding envelopes. And though, and most projects, particularly affordable, are coming from multiple funding sources. Typically, through the half program, we're anywhere from eight to twelve percent of their overall envelope of funding. But yes, some are challenged. That's an industry challenge. I'd also say one of the other challenges is approvals from other funding sources.
No, I heard one specifically last week in councillor Santos's ward that's in trouble. But so who, who spoke to the federal government last time about the hundred and twenty-two point four? Who confirmed that? Which office? Was it your office, the director, the mayor's office? How was that done?
It was done through application. The, the minister came back in November of twenty-three, and, and sorry, I'll be slightly vague on that. But November of twenty-three, the contract was approved by council with CMHC December of twenty-three, and that's the number we were working with. We were also, to be very straightforward, we were also concerned up to an election whether or not the program would continue. And that seemed a much more legitimate concern in January, became less so, and the same government who initiated this program was re-elected with the most seats. So we're now planning as if this will continue.
No, I recall that during the grant hearing. So who would approach the federal government now and say, look, you seem to be more committed, we're running into an issue of affordability, getting projects out, actually getting affordable units there because of the cost of inflation and so on? Who would approach the federal government and say, look, you really need to look at that number again, and we'd like to see an increase?
We, we have had ongoing conversation, administration to administration. I also think the mayor's leadership in that role would be critical, too.
Are you aware if the mayor's office has reached out to the federal government since newly elected and the new prime minister to ask for more funds?
I cannot speak to that. I know, I did hear the news this week where the mayor had conversation with the minister and a number of others through the FCM.
I know the mayor's been very good at doing things like that, and I'm sure they're on top of it. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, councillor Luks.
Thank you very much. I imagine throughout the day, thank you for all your work you've done on this, by the way. Like, this is, this is monumental for the city of Winnipeg. So I imagine throughout the day, or at some point, motions will come forward. And I just want to understand, before we vote on any of these motions, I want to understand if it will meet the criteria, the national criteria, or it won't, right? So the federal government has criteria. I know your departments have been working with them throughout these past few months, year. So if motions come forward, how will we know if they will accept those motions or not? Or those amendments, those amendments?
That's my first question.
Councillor Luks, that can be posed to the public service as well.
Okay.
There'll be an opportunity to review motions with them, as we did last time in the hearing.
Okay.
But you can answer if you wish.
From the context of what we've been dealing with, Madam Speaker, to CMHC, it was the spirit of the intent of the agreement, because they, they've acknowledged that many cities apply it slightly differently. We did socialize, for lack of a better term, the, the information that went out to public information sessions, they said that appeared in spirit to meet the intent. I can't speak to future amendments or motions that would be made. I think the public service could give good advice related to that. And I know Lissy Rapport is regularly in contact with partners in CMHC. We're also part of, we've shared information through the half office with other municipalities in Western Canada as to what they're doing, so there's an alignment. And in some cases, we've borrowed some of the things they're doing that have already been approved. So I think the public service can give some advice as we move forward. Because I, I do, I do anticipate discussion and alternative proposals perhaps coming forward.
Okay. And, and then maybe this is a question for the public service. But while we may have met our missing middle quota, I anticipate, we all anticipate that immigration will continue. I think we're projecting four hundred thousand a year versus the five hundred thousand under the Trudeau regime. So I, I, I guess this will be maybe for the public service what they're projecting for growth in our city to accommodate increased missing middle versus single-family. Because as we know, many come and don't want a single family.
Yeah. The, the statistics we've seen, I think they'll be released at some point this week, indicate that the new bills have remained fairly stable. The need and demand has grown exponentially to that. And I think there's been conversation with the City Economist related to some of those statistics. And I think the public service can share some of that information with you. There, there's a growing gap for housing need and shelter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is councillor Dobson.
Yes, thank you very much. Initially, in order to have a better chance to receive HAF funding, it was suggested that we, we do fourplexes and we, we zone and all that. And now it appears with all this new funding, it's a requirement. What's changed? Before it was suggested, now they're telling us.
Madam Speaker, yes, councillor, you are correct. It was gently suggested by the Minister of Housing that we amend to be eligible. It has been, it is more directly stated in the chief funding requirements that four-by-fours are a requirement. It's also being stated in multiple funding, transit funding is another, that four-by-fours and these adoption of the housing principles are a critical part of the criteria to be able to apply. It has changed. Originally, it was a suggestion, but it was a strong suggestion from the minister in the November of twenty-three.
Okay. My second question is, are they stepping outside of their lane, outside of their jurisdiction? Because it appears that they're trying to control our city, city zoning.
Madam Speaker, if I may, I may be stepping out of my lane to comment on that. But the, but in, in short, yes, they're saying funding doesn't come to municipalities across Canada without some requirements. This is one of those requirements that they've identified.
Okay, I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Mays, followed by councillor Orlaco?
I've gone already.
Okay, councillor Orlaco?
I can sit down, right? Excellent. Question I have is regarding, I've, I saw the bylaw, gone through it quite a few times. I have some other little questions. But one of the questions that may be clarified for me, it's a front yard setback. I, I, I understand how it's calculated. But my, my question more is the front porches and, and, oops. So let's say we have, Lake River Heights is very keen on their front yard setbacks. But now, as I'm reading it, it appears that with a porch, you can come out into the front yard, I think it was twelve feet, something quite large. Is that into the front yard setback? Or is that part of the existing footprint they're allowed to have?
If possible, councillor, I would defer that as a question for the public service. And I think it will be covered in their presentation.
Absolutely. Actually, absolutely correct. All week to then. And I have a few other questions similar to that, but I'll wait for the public service.
Yeah, thank you. And I know the director has a comprehensive knowledge of, of those details. So she can take you through that.
None for now.
Thank you. We'll continue with questions momentarily. There's a ten-minute health break, and that will be now. Up to ten minutes. Thank you. Good morning. Welcome back to our public hearing of June second, twenty twenty-five. We're at questions of the applicant, Mr. John Kiernan. Councillor Orlaco, you have the floor.
I'm good.
You've asked your questions. Councillor Mays?
Thank you. In a sort of similar vein, I think largely, to direct the questions to the speaker. For clarity, and again, for context, unlike the infill guidelines, which only dealt with mature communities, and there was some jousting about, you know, roughly twenty, pre nineteen fifty neighborhoods, and does this one fall in or not? This is a citywide initiative. This does not, this isn't just in older communities. This applies citywide.
Madam Speaker, councillor's entirely correct. It is a citywide program. And I use the language around four units as a right, because I think where we're going, per lot. It's to how we, in, the public service expanded that to show how we can accommodate two threes and fours. But it is citywide.
So, and I mean, I'll have some questions about the Dawson Trail area plan, which mercifully I won't pose to you, John. But
Appreciate it.
I mean, we're, we're amending all sorts of local area plans here today, including the Sea of Mud that is, you know, Dawson Trail, south of, I think, Precinct K, we're amending. I mean, none of this, in some places, there isn't servicing yet, and yet there aren't existing roads yet, right? So I mean, this isn't just established neighborhoods where, or mature communities. This is, this is the whole city we're dealing with.
No, the, the rules, as they, as council eventually decides what they will be. But as these amendments are applied, there are a number of changes and alignments that have to be undertaken in those secondary plans and the PDOs. And that would bring them into alignment so that it's not a multi-step process where council's given direction that contravenes a council-approved PDO or a council-approved secondary plan. So it's about alignment.
Right.
Madam Speaker.
Thank you.
Three more things, I think. We all, I think, acknowledge a need for more housing. Of course, we also acknowledge that we don't simply have to approve every housing application. For example, recently, the staff recommended some hundreds of units at the LeMay Forest site. Council unanimously rejected that. So it would have meant more housing, but council unanimously rejected that. So you'd be, you're aware of that.
Madam Speaker, I am aware.
Yeah. Two things more, I think, Madam Speaker. Council has pointed out that there is some risk here. If one, if one comes in with an amendment that's wildly out of line, not to paraphrase council, too far out of line with federal requirements, they will push back. They will reject it. On malls and corridors, I believe we approved seven amendments, six or seven of the eight that were put forward, though. Including, councillor Luks had one about bird-friendly design. There were numerous other ones. I think councillor Orlaco had one passed as well about affordability. All of that went through, the federal government didn't force us to reconvene the hearing. We, we made some amendments, we moved on.
Yes, we did.
Final question, and again, this almost certainly is one you'll defer to someone else, but I'll ask it to you. The wording around transit tends to shimmer evolve a bit here. It would be fair to say the actual council motion said within eight hundred meters of transit. Some of the, on the other polar end of this, you've got things in the half agreement or the half report saying, we're gonna build within eight hundred meters walking distance of high-frequency transit corridors. It, it, it's a bit hard, as the same retailer, to think of Dunkirk Drive, where the buses are gonna run every thirty-eight minutes in the evening and the weekends as a high-frequency transit corridor. You're just standing there, there's no bench, there's no shelter. So this isn't the bluer subway. But in the end, the, the requirement or the, can you walk us through what, what criteria were used then by, by the staff? It's, it's eight hundred meters walking distance from, not all transit, but transit defined as?
It, it was the high-frequency quarters, and there was, we worked through with transit, or the staff worked through with transit, both that definition and with CMHC to identify the, those routes. Two-fold. One was to ensure we met our numbers in, in, in all transparency. And another, a, a separate piece, however, is the Canadian Public Transit Funding has slightly different criteria. And I'll say, and I think the, the department has a map that will make it very clear what that entails, what those boundaries are. But there is a difference between the half-funding requirements and the national transit funding on bus rapid transit corridors, which is the single line versus the multiple lines.
Okay. So thank, that anticipated my next question. One could try to amend the definition here, I suppose, of rapid transit to say Dunkirk out, St. Anthony's Road in, St. Mary's in. But you're saying that, that bit got reviewed with CMHC?
Yes. And, and we wanted to make sure they were comfortable with what was, you know, being brought forward for consideration. Other cities have been more aggressive than we have in identifying areas for coverage.
Okay. You had mentioned in your comments that the document that was the subject of the online town halls and the, the public consultation, that had been socialized with your
Euphemism?
With CMHC. But there was a revision that we were given, that was made public last Monday, that we would have seen then and, and was discussed in the council seminar, to exempt lots that touch on various rivers and creeks. Not across the street, but rather, to be blunt, if you have a piece of land, if your property touches upon the Red River, the Seine River, various other river streams, no, you're, you're no longer part of the debate about threeplexes and fourplexes. But that wouldn't have been yet run by the
It has not. And I would note that some of those adjustments, I would say, came, you know, the public service listened. The issues were raised at some of the information sessions. And there was modifications, adjustments on the Riparian Corridor component to begin to address some of those concerns.
Yeah. No, thank you for that, and I'm not critical. I mean, certainly, it's meant in my ward alone, I was doing the math last night. Everything from number four to number one hundred and four River Road on the even side, you know, would have qualified, now doesn't. McNulty, which is a lot of river frontage, that falls away now. So we, but we don't know how many units, how many, how many lots that would have qualified for the threeplexes or fourplexes now don't qualify. We, we wouldn't know that, I presume.
That calculation, I don't believe, has been undertaken at this time. What it is is not to move away from densification, but there's What it is, is not to move away from densification, but there's multiple competing priorities on every site, and so one of those was also tree protection, habitat, riparian corridors. How can we acknowledge they exist? We live in a river city. So, I think some of those adjustments were thought out by the Department, and they listened in those public sessions, and there's some minor modifications that are being made there, yet unsocialized, to use
Yeah, and further, I, I agree with those changes, those revisions. I hope my questions didn't undermine that, but it, it isn't something that's yet been socialized, to use your term, with CMHC. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and through you. Thank you, Mr. Kiernan, for his presentation thus far. It's a question, or set of questions, kind of following up on what the line of questioning Counselor Dobson asked earlier on. We're here primarily because in December of 2023, the Government of Canada, through the, the CMHC entered into a degree with the City of Winnipeg, so the City of Winnipeg could access $122.4 million of Housing Accelerator Fund. Access to those funds is conditional, and that's why we're here today, on certain requirements and changes that the federal government wants the City of Winnipeg and all of the cities to make. We have, since that agreement was signed, we have a new federal government with a new Prime Minister. Question was asked earlier as to whether or not, I've had, you know, political discussions, I had political discussions, in my political discussions, no way at any time have I been given an indication with a new Prime Minister that those conditions have been dropped. I'm wondering, for yourself and those involved in dialogue administratively with the federal administration, have you been given any indication that the conditions related to these funds and accessing these funds have been dropped?
Madam Speaker, to you, to your worship, no, there's been no communication from administration that there's been any change in those requirements. And in fact, I would say with the mandate letters given last week by the Prime Minister, perhaps has strengthened some of the contributions, but I see none of the requirements being removed, and in fact, they had been additionally added to other funding criteria.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate that you did mention the other funding that the City of Winnipeg is, has been accessing and trying to access, not only the Housing Accelerator Fund, but the CHIF, the Canada Housing Infrastructure Fund, transit-related funding, I think all total, when our staff add it up, it's over $400 million in funding that the City of Winnipeg is accessing or trying to access, but it's all, as the federal government has said, past and previous, or previous and current, conditional on the City of Winnipeg making some, you know, some changes. My final question then would be, maybe you've answered it already, it's related to future. I know the Prime Minister has been really clear, those of us that attended FCM just last week, heard the Prime Minister talk about the goal, future goal, for the federal government to get more deeply affordable housing units built. I've had no indication politically, I don't think anyone around this, this room has had any indication politically, that for the future, conditions would be dropped. We don't know if they'll continue, but I've been given no indication, indication that they'll be dropped. The question then, administratively, have you heard anything that for future programs, whatever they may be, related to federal housing, that conditions have been dropped?
Not, no, Madam Speaker, to you, your worship, no, those conditions remain in place, they are requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next is Counsel Reedy.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, so it's my understanding that the right to four, maybe the four stories about the missing middle, which would be middle income, and, but I'm wondering, in the inner city, Madam Speaker, Counselor Girway, Counselor Edie, Counselor Santos, we have neighborhoods that are falling apart. When looking at going to the right of four and maybe a four-story, was it ever looked at as to what the possibility of new builds would be happening in these inner-city neighborhoods where there's some new housing being built, but nobody's really wanting to invest and put their money in there? Was there a study or a look at what impact this might have to help, help the inner city?
Madam Speaker, thank you for the question. Yes, and we're renewing, reviewing, and with members of the community, the Housing Needs Assessment. There's also some other multiple programs on small lot strategies that we're looking to develop this year, including supportive housing and the zoning bylaw changes. The small lot inner city is a challenge, and staff have been working in collaboration with the provincial housing authorities and Manitoba Housing to be able to explore some of those opportunities. We're not there yet, in all honesty, but we think there's a partnership that can be struck with the province of Manitoba to, in support, address some of those more challenging, smaller sites.
Okay. Madam Speaker, just acknowledging, so we have these standards for, for a right to four or three with a sizable frontage, Madam Speaker. Is there anything being proposed new in here where we have, in the Duffer neighborhood, for example, Madam Speaker, that, that neighborhood, you have along, say Stella, you have lots that are 150 feet deep, some more, but they may only be smaller on the frontage. Was there ever a look at how you might design four units to build skinny instead of wide?
Madam Speaker, we have looked at those for some opportunities to replicate models for some of those unique sites, and that's what has come into play on supportive housing with Manitoba Housing, and also the Department has looked at a number of the more challenging sites, just what are those fits? And to be honest, we haven't spent a lot of time reviewing. CMHC has also brought out a template book of opportunities. We're not sure how well some of those fit within our context in Winnipeg, but they're being reviewed, so there are those opportunities underway to create a design model.
Madam Speaker, so would that mean we would look at amending the zoning bylaw in the future for certain areas that you could maybe call a secondary area or whatever?
That is a possibility, yes.
Thank you. Next is Counsel Chambers.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise to ask through you, and just clarifying whether it's through the sponsor to this, this motion today, or whether it's the public service that would respond with respect to sideyards and what the, what the requirements are respecting sideyards based on access, drainage, and safety in terms of firewalls between the homes.
Thank you for the question.
Madam Speaker, yes, it will be addressed in the public services presentation that has taken into consideration building code standards, our sideyard setbacks, and lot drainage has become, is an issue as you get tighter and tighter sites, some of those requirements, and also water and waste requirements as well start to play into this. It's not simply a zoning piece, it's how to operationalize some of these, which includes stormwater capture, permeability, those aspects, and the Department has looked at that, those elements as well.
Thank you. Next question.
Second question. Thank you, Madam Speaker, through you to, to the sponsor. At FCM this past weekend, we learned more about permeable pavers. Is there any requirements through this in terms of, and again, potentially a question more so for the public service, but again, in terms of drainage, and you raised that point, and it, you know, got my creative juices again flowing, the use of permeable pavers, is that a requirement going to be more of a requirement going forward in terms of these changes that are coming forward?
Madam Speaker, we've moved on to one of my favorite topics, is the difference between lacustrine and alluvial soils. So, I'm excited to be able to respond to this question. I used to have Riverbank Management. So, in lacustrine soils, Winnipeg, challenged with our roads, challenged with many things, there is the opportunity to look at permeable pavers and those options. It's more challenging here than perhaps I would use Saskatoon, you know, as a per example, or Regina. We have to do it a little differently here, but it can be accommodated, and I know the Director has interest in that as well, to being able to achieve it.
Great, thank you.
I could go on longer on lacustrine soils, but I don't think it, there are delegations waiting.
Thank you. Counsel Reedy?
Yes, Madam Speaker, a different line of question, I think there may be something in there, but, so, this city of Winnipeg has a challenge. If you end up having a major, use a walker or wheelchair, something could happen to you, or somebody, a child in your family, and so on, and there's a shortage of accessible housing, what, are we providing any conditions or anything that say if you're building four stories, the main floor has to be an accessible suite, or anything like that?
I would, Madam Speaker, I would prefer to defer that to public service, Counselor, if that would be permissible. They will probably also identify how we count stories and the requirements for in multifamily elevators once you're over two stories, and a number of those other construction details, but I think the public service will cover that, that component of accessibility, and we did do it in Waverley West with visibility, visible, visitable houses, difficult for me to say, in that matter, but I think the public service would be best situated to respond.
Thank you. Counsel Reedy?
Yes, Madam Speaker, just, I want to put this on the table, I will get specific with our public service on my questions, but from what I hear about the kinds of designs or whatever, now, the building code does have provision that if you go above three stories, you have to have an elevator on a new build. There's been a number of grandfathered buildings across the city, and the model of some of these builds, the front stair is like tall, whatever, because the basement is, is a suite and whatever, and so, to bring people to the main floor and so on, but if the building code provides that piece of accessibility, is, like, is there any means or provision to say that, forget the visitable, these people with disabilities have to live day-to-day, a place to live, it's, you know, they're not just a visitor? And is there, do you know of any way that it's possible for the city to say, your main floor suite has to be accessible? So, that means all doorways meet accessibility, design, washrooms, and those sorts of things?
Madam Speaker, yes, and some of the approvals that Community Committee and Council have given, that has been a requirement on several of the projects, but I would defer to the Department and the public service related to building permit meets development and code issues. I think that can be covered by the public service.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Mays?
I'd use the term missing middle, and perhaps should have defined that better when I asked some questions, so it's not, there's no income or affordability reference here, right? It's just buildings with two, three, or four units, and, and the federal government, at some point here, had said, if you've got a single-family home with a secondary suite, that's, that counts toward the two threes and fours.
Madam Speaker, that's the correct interpretation. The missing middle is the piece between basically single-family and multifamily, and so it has a variety of looks and feels and number of units in some cases. So, falling into the missing middle, as we touched on previously, was secondary suites in a single-family. That changed the criteria a little for the funding program.
Okay, yeah, and I mean, the FAQ page talked about reminder, missing middle is only 5% of the projected units in the half application, so certainly the half application mostly focused on malls and corridors, the bigger apartments, the single-family, almost 4,000 units of single-family, but this, and we've spent a lot of time on it due to the imposition of the federal requirement, but at the end of the day, so it's, it's, by missing middle, we're talking about two, three, and four units, pure and simple.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counsel Arlard?
Speaker, through you to the proponent. I'm pouring into the documents, and currently there's a process for design review on Promashia Boulevard, in particular to look at things like having culturally appropriate signage, and looking to see if this is or not part of the package. There seems to be, it doesn't, it's not clear to me based on the documents that are provided, so if, if you might answer that question, it's something that's going, certainly going to be of importance to the, to the community in the area.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Speaker, I think we would have to get back to that on it, Counselor. I can't speak to it at the moment, but let me take a look, and perhaps we can address it when we come back to close.
And I guess the second question, are you aware, I wish there were a better way of saying this, I had met with, with some of the planning staff prior, and I do see some similar requests that have been integrated there, in particular, the single-family policy area, and some language there to, to reflect the, with more detail what is intended by that, and, and I see that there is, there's a definition of up to four units, but that language has been, I think the, the intent of the original secondary plan, I think, is in line with, with what is being proposed, and so I wanted to thank the public service for that.
No, and thank you, Madam Speaker, and we were aware, there were some secondary plans that are changing dramatically, there was other things we wanted to ensure remained in place, so thank you, Counselor. Thank, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Dobson?
Yes, thank you very much. The two, three, and four units are on one lot, probably, I would expect that that would be one owner. So, would it be fair to say that these are, would be rental properties?
Madam Speaker, I, I can't see what the market may do. They may be rental, no different than a single-family house could be a rental, so it may be a blend, it may be condo-wise, there may be a lot of opportunities. It would be hard for me to give you a definitive answer on that, Counselor, more than probably the marketplace will, will adjust, as will the opportunity for people to acquire housing.
Okay, I have another question, seeing that you mentioned condos. Are there currently any condos that are two, three, or four units?
Yes.
Okay.
And in essence, we see that in adaptive reuse of some houses that become two units, three units. There are some four-unit ones, those have gone through the regular zoning process. This is to, this amendment will, by right, address some of those, along with, and I don't want to say by right as if there's not restrictions, and I think the Department will talk about that on the shape, the size, lot coverage, density, et cetera.
Okay, I'm just a little confused, so if, if I've got one lot, and I own the lot, and there's three units on there, how could that not be rental? Could you not, you have to separate it somehow?
It could be rental, yes, to clarify, it could be rental, could be owner occupied with suites being rented. That's what I said, I didn't want to give you a definitive answer related to that, so it will be a range of what happens.
I understand owner might live in one of the units, but the other unit, or two or three, would, would have to be rentals?
Yep, they very well could be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dobson. Next is Counsel Reedy.
Yes, Madam Speaker, follow-up on, actually, it came out of Counselor Dobson's question. I am aware of conversions of old churches to four, four or five condos, but Madam Speaker, in some neighborhoods around my ward and, well, other wards, there are some very large houses. So, this right to four would give them the right to renovate, to create four separate units in some of these really substantially sized houses?
Madam Speaker, yes, it would. They would have to meet current building code when that occurs, and so they would have to take on those responsibilities to bring them up to, I believe it's 2020 building code standards, to be able to meet that, that need, yes. And that, and that's, I'll leave it there, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any further speakers? Thank you, any further speakers? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Kiernan?
Thank you all for your time and consideration this morning.
We'll come back to you later in the process, okay, before we move on to the next step, I just, for those in the gallery, I just want to explain again what the process is here today, we just heard from the applicant, a member of the city of Winnipeg, we're now going to hear from the public service, also staff of the city of Winnipeg, and there'll be a question period as well, following that, we'll hear from residents in support of this application, then those in opposition, and then after that, those that are just here for information, those presentations will take place in person and also virtually, and after that, we will hear back from Mr. Kiernan, the applicant, for any rebuttal, and then we'll have council motions, so those in the gallery will likely not be speaking until the very earliest after 1:30 today, likely, so I just wanted to let you know that, there's a lunch recess from 12 to 1:30. We'll now move on to the presentation by the public service, Director Hazel Boris?
Thank you, I would like to share a presentation that many of both the councillors and the community has seen, if you have attended the public information sessions during March, April, and May, however, you will notice that this particular version of this presentation has, includes changes that we received during those series of public information sessions and city council seminars, this presentation that I am sharing now is available currently on winnipeg.ca/infillhousing. The city of Winnipeg needs more housing to ensure everyone has a home they can afford, housing availability has been a concern across Canada, as Winnipeg continues to grow, we need more housing quickly to fill the, fill the gaps and keep up with the ongoing demand. According to the Our Winnipeg 2045 Vision, the city needs a variety of housing types, which include denser forms of urban housing, new neighborhoods designed around a mix of land uses, and housing that is adequate, safe, affordable, and accessible. The Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation, or CMHC, estimates that Canada needs approximately three and a half million additional housing units by 2030 to restore housing affordability. To meet the increasing demand for housing, the city has acquired funding to modify zoning rules and local area plans, expedite development and permit approvals, establish programs, and provide grants to build more housing quickly. As part of the national housing strategy, CMHC has provided housing through the Housing Accelerator Fund, or HAF, this funding is intended to remove barriers and accelerate the growth of housing supply. The city of Winnipeg has acquired 122 million in housing accelerator funds to create over 14,000 housing units in a three-year timeframe. In order to establish more housing quickly, the city of Winnipeg has developed eight targeted action plan initiatives, and today we will be speaking to the first two of these. To maintain access to the federal half funding, the city of Winnipeg is required by CMHC to complete these initiatives, which include as-of-right residential development at mall sites and along commercial corridors, which was completed in November and effective in January, to allow two, three, and four unit dwellings as-of-right citywide with certain limitations, and new fourplexes up to 39 feet in height within 800 meters or half-mile walking distance of high-frequency transit stops. Where required, local area plans will be amended to reflect these zoning changes. There are opportunities to create more housing in existing neighborhoods in Winnipeg, infill housing refers to low-density opportunities to integrate new housing in existing neighborhoods. Where higher density means larger apartments and condominiums along major roads, infill housing generally refers to duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes in neighborhoods that are primarily single-family detached now. These new rules to enable these types of dwellings will in no way hamper single-family homes, which will continue to still be allowed. There are a variety of ways that two, three, and four unit dwellings can be developed, and we'll discuss what that might look like in later slides. It is important to note that development will be subject to capacities for water and waste servicing, servicing limitations will be determined on a case-by-case basis during building permit review, until studies have been completed for the city at large. Potential benefits to today's zoning changes include faster and streamlined approval processes for new or adaptively reused housing, increased housing including affordable units and missing middle housing, optimized land use and infrastructure, greatly reduced cost of infrastructure, moderately reduced cost of services, better pedestrian connectivity in more walkable neighborhoods, preserved green space by building up rather than out, greater social interaction, improved access to transit and cycling, and therefore reduced commuter times, and other potential benefits raised through public and stakeholder engagement. Potential impacts include increased traffic, reduced privacy, some properties experiencing shadows cast by adjacent residential buildings, and other potential impacts raised through public and stakeholder engagement. The potential impacts will be reduced through proposed form-based zoning regulations related to built form. The proposed zoning changes will allow residential developments to be built as-of-right, which every lot in Winnipeg today has zoning that enables as-of-right development right now, if people just follow the existing rules and don't ask for rezoning or variances. This particular as-of-right proposal would be subject to the following limitations, in order to be, build two dwelling units per lot, you would need a minimum lot width of 25 feet if there is a back lane and it's a stacked duplex, or 40 feet if it's a side-by-side duplex, and in that case, the back lane can be gravel. If there is no back lane, so you're in a front-loaded condition, you would need a minimum of 35 feet as a minimum lot width for an up-down duplex with a side access to the lot, or 50 feet for a side-by-side duplex with a front drive. For a triplex, there would need to be a minimum lot width of 35 feet if there is a back lane, and that back lane would be required to be paved, in order to access this as-of-right development ability. For a triplex on a corner lot where there is no back lane, the minimum lot width is 50 feet, and with a front drive, 60 feet, and that is the same for four units with a back lane, or on a corner lot would be a 50-foot minimum lot width, and with a front drive, a 60-foot minimum lot width, so for triplexes and fourplexes, the back lane must be paved. In all of these circumstances, the minimum, the maximum proposed building height would be the same as it is today, with the exception of if, of four units per lot is being built within the half-mile or 800 meters of a free, high-frequency transit corridor stop, then they could have an extra four feet to go up to 39 feet total. The proposed zoning changes will permit two, three, and four unit dwellings as-of-right without a public hearing, provided the lots are currently zoned R1, R2, and meet specific rules relating to servicing, rivers, creeks, lot widths, back lanes, and proximity to certain transit routes, that we'll discuss on a few slides later. These areas that are in dark purple on the map before you have paved back lanes, so two, three, and four units would be permitted, subject to the minimum lot width shown in the, in, in the key to the bottom right, and also subject to the limitations of slides 10 and 11. The gray areas on this map are areas that have no back lanes, new two, three, and four units would be permitted using a front drive and meeting minimum lot widths, again, shown on this key, subject to the limitations of slides 10 and 11. The light purple are areas that have gravel back, back lanes, and are located in areas designated as mature communities, only new two units are permitted here. This map illustrates where different maximum building heights could occur, although it does not ensure that they will occur, the map is only a guide for illustrative purposes, and exceptions may occur based on factors such as proximity to frequent transit routes, lot widths, and back lane servicing. Surfacing, the areas in light orange would generally have a maximum building height of 28 to 35 feet, and this maximum applies to lots that are located within mature communities and are not within 800 meters or a half-mile walking distance of a bus stop along a frequent transit corridor. This has not changed from the current height maximums for homes in these areas today. The area in medium orange would have a maximum building height of 35 feet, this has not changed from what is allowed today. The areas in brown are within the half-mile walking distance of a bus stop along a frequent transit corridor and have a paved back lane. These areas would have a maximum building height of 39 feet, but only if a new four-unit dwelling was being built, which allows for a four-story building, provided all other conditions are met. Lower height limits would apply to new two-unit and three-unit dwellings here. Limitations and excluded lots, for as-of-right development, it is subject to a number of limitations and exclusions. Three- and four-unit dwellings must have a paved lane unless the lots are wide enough to accommodate a front driveway or a side approach, and if there is no rear lane existing. Secondary suites are considered in the total unit count permitted on any lot. Lots that are partially within the half-mile or 800-meter high-frequency transit corridors are excluded from the public area, if your, your lot is half in, that means it's all the way out. Two-unit dwellings are not permitted on lots that are narrower than 25 feet, three-unit dwellings are not permitted on lots that are narrower than 35 feet, or adjacent to rivers and creeks in lots zoned R1, which is something different than the last time you saw this slide. Four-unit dwellings are not permitted on lots that are narrower than 50 feet or adjacent to rivers and creeks in lots that are zoned R1, R2, and RMFS, again, a change since you saw this last. Three- or four-unit dwellings must have a full range of municipal services, and that means an urban standard roadway, piped land drainage, sewer, and water. Two units may be developed on lots fronting chip-sealed roads. Lots must not be designated as industrial, institutional, or parklands. Excluded lots are in the downtown zoning bylaw, lots must not be located in the airport vicinity protection area one. Three- or four-unit dwellings must not be abutting a rail line or yard. So you'll find a number of those restrictions in sections 3.1 and 3.2 of the zoning bylaw in, in its draft form now. The proposed zoning changes include the following rules for maximum lot coverage, so you'll see that the proposed lot coverage maximums equal those that are existing at the moment for, for recent communities, and they're very similar, but slightly different, and in some cases slightly more, in, in mature communities, in order to encourage the buildings to stay lower and not go to their maximum heights, for a number of reasons we'll discuss in a moment. The proposed zoning changes include the following rules related to setbacks. The front yard must be the greater of 10 feet, or matching the shallowest front yard of the abutting two properties, so in the vast majority of lots in Winnipeg, it means that the new construction will equal whatever lot next door to you is the shallowest front yard, or, or something bigger. Side yards, for lots that are less than 50 feet wide, must be a minimum of 4, 3 feet and 3 feet, and lots that are 50 foot wide or more must be a minimum of 4 feet and 4 feet, again, this is one of the metrics that changed after the public information sessions and council seminars. Rear yards must be a minimum of 2 feet if abutting a back lane, 10 feet if not abutting a back lane, and 25 feet if abutting a river or a creek, again, that's something that changed from the public information sessions, of adding the river or creek setback that goes up two and a half times what it otherwise would have been. Exceptions are for existing structures, which the setback of an existing structure is considered conforming, so if you're taking a historic home, or even not a historic home, an existing home in Winnipeg, and redeveloping it as a two, three, or four unit dwelling, then the existing setbacks of the, the structure are conforming, and the required setback of any extension of a side wall must be, what must either match or be greater than the existing setbacks, because when we look at the last five years, many of our historic homes, which no longer have a strong market demand from, from the next generations, are getting redeveloped, adaptively reused into these sorts of patterns. The proposed zoning changes include the following rules relating to parking and lanes, for lanes, two units are permitted on lots that do not adjoin a paved back lane, three and four units with no driveways require a paved back lane. With respect to parking, a minimum parking of one off-street parking space is required per unit. For a two- or three-unit build, where all units are considered affordable housing, no additional parking is required, so that is the, the biggest incentive to build affordable housing as far as this zoning proposal. A four-unit building where all units are considered affordable housing will require one parking stall at a minimum, no visitor parking is required, accessible parking spaces are calculated on full parking requirement. The parking location must be set back at least 16 feet from the front facade, except for parking areas for lots with front driveways and an R2 and/or RMFS, that is something new from the public information session direction. Parking location must be located on pavement, which may be a wheel path only, also something that was at the request of community members who wanted ribbon parking in order to increase the permeability of the land, so that stormwater can be more easily absorbed, they, and they, the parking location may be located with any, any building on the site. For driveways, a lot with a four-unit dwelling must have a minimum width of 60 feet in order to have a driveway. Where lots have access to a paved lane, parking must be accessed only from the lane. Where lots have access to a side street but no access to a paved lane, parking must be accessed only from the side street. Driveway width is limited to 10 feet maximum, driveways along lanes are not restricted in width, driveways must be paved and may be limited to the wheel path with ribbon pavement to increase permeable surface. The Winnipeg Charter requires that all zoning regulations conform to local secondary plans and more broadly, to the Complete Communities Direction Strategy 2.0, the city's overarching land use and development policy. In addition to the rapid zoning bylaw amendments discussed here today, amendments to Complete Communities 2.0, and some local area plans throughout the city are also required. These amendments will enable the proposed zoning changes to take place and provide for infill housing development to occur across the city. 21 local area plans have been identified for amendment, amendments vary between plans depending on their age, complexity, local context, but follow a similar pattern. Whereas zoning bylaws provide regulations for the form or the function of the land, secondary plan policies provide high-level guidance for future development. The proposed amendments can be summarized on this slide, the green dots are for adding infill housing types for two, three, and four unit developments as permitted uses to designations where they are not currently permitted or supported, so as an example, local area plans- So as an example, local area plan that might currently say "single-family uses," those three words would be replaced with "lower-density residential housing typologies" shall be the predominant land use, allowing for single-family detached housing, duplexes, and then adding the words triplexes, fourplexes, townhomes, rowhomes throughout the neighborhood. And so that is for all 21 of these local area plans would have that sort of language changed within the plan. Then the second-most number of dots on this slide are the orange dots, which are infill-related challenges, changes, and all except for South St. Boniface Sage Creek in St. Vitale and Transcona West and Transcona, all except for those two have an orange dot. Policy changes are required for these orange dots as a result of adding infill housing types as an allowable use or as a result of other provisions in the associated zoning bylaw changes. That is, zoning amendments address building mass setbacks and height. So an example is where it currently says where multifamily zoning or commercial zoning is located adjacent to single-family zoning. Single-family zoning would be then replaced with a lower-density residential area. The design and siting of multi-story apartment buildings and/or commercial development will reflect a transition in building massing and setbacks to provide a transition between densities and intensities of use. And then finally, there are only three local area plans that need a bylaw conversion. So those are the blue dots on this page, which includes Dawson Trail Precinct J in Transcona, North Point Village Precinct S, F as in Frank in Old Kildonan, and Waterford Green Precinct C as in Cat in Old Kildonan, Point Douglas. So for those three, a bylaw conversion is required because the plan was endorsed by council but not adopted as a statutory bylaw. So it must be converted to a bylaw before it can be amended in accordance with the charter. So in this case, these are the Housing Accelerator Fund Initiative 2 that we're talking about here. All the slides before this one, we're talking about the Housing Accelerator Fund Initiative 1. So visualizing what all of those plethora of words and zoning context might look like in real life, this board illustrates what a sample mid-block, up-down, two-unit development could look like using the proposed zoning rules on a site that is 32 feet wide at the frontage and in a depth of 115 feet. So to be clear, the site context slide on the left side of the screen, this is every rooftop that is currently within this two-block area, so studying it carefully and looking at the aerial view of what this infill might look like along with the building placement. So you'll notice here, here's that 10-foot minimum setback, but because all of the homes on the street are significantly more than that, predominantly the two on either side, the setback is just matching that next-door neighbor. And looking at this having two parking spaces, which are what these triangles are in building placement, and then the primary building being in front of that parking garage, and then looking at the street view, the green home is an existing home in Winnipeg today, and the yellow home is what is proposed. So again, this is the infill house here in the middle with looking next door at a 2 and 1/2-story house, and then also what a one-story house would look like in this scenario on this actual street in Winnipeg. So before we started drafting this zoning bylaw, we sat with homeowners and infill housing advocates and actually laid out what all of these homes could be, looked at the frequent complaints about our existing zoning and how it wasn't fulfilling market demand, and what we could change about the zoning bylaw to make it more in keeping with the way people prefer to live today. This example is a mid-block, three-dwelling unit per lot that you can quickly see from these three parking spaces in the back on a 40-foot-wide by 127-foot-deep lot. So again, looking at this being the pink house here and its two neighbors. So in this case, it's slightly taller than the houses next door, but still within that range. This is an example of a corner lot, which is a three-unit development on a 40-foot-wide by 115-foot-deep lot. So it's the blue house in this example. And then a mid-block, four-dwelling units with a 50-foot-wide frontage and a depth of 125 feet. So it's the green home here and here. As you can see from this example, this two-story house is adjacent to a 3 and 1/2-story, or maybe a three-story on one side and a 2 and 1/2-story on the other. So in this case, it's shorter than both of them. And then finally, not finally, a four-corner, four-unit development on a 50-foot frontage and a depth of 127 feet. Again, this is what that might look like in this pink house. And a front-loaded example of a fourplex on a 60-foot-wide by 125-foot-deep lot, again having that front drive requiring that 60 feet wide. And then also a four-story development, fourplex within the half-mile or 800 meters of a frequent transit corridor bus stop on a 50-foot frontage with 130 feet deep. We really don't think this particular four stories is going to get built very often, if at all, because it requires Part III of the Manitoba Building Code. Instead of Part IX of the Manitoba Building Code, all of the previous slides would fall under Part IX. So under this Part III for that four-story condition, it would require an elevator and professional designers. So looking at the 2024 average construction cost for a home that's 30 feet wide by 40 feet deep as the floor plate of the building, that would cost approximately $200,000 more in construction costs for that elevator accessible to every floor and for the professional designers. So we really don't think that is going to be something that we see very much of. The new zoning rules will accommodate new development without a public hearing in order to allow for quicker residential development in specific areas that we just discussed, known as as-of-right zoning. As-of-right zoning does not mean that a landowner can develop whatever they want, wherever they want. The City of Winnipeg will continue to regulate development through a specific process that ensures the new rules are followed. This diagram illustrates what this process is, with the first step being an optional preliminary technical meeting with city staff, the public service, in order to review the site and the operational constraints; the second step being for the landowner to submit their application; the third step being staff sufficiency review to determine if all the required information is provided; the fourth step is staff technical review, which is completed across several City of Winnipeg departments to review the final application against the bylaw standards. A development permit is issued if the application is compliant with all of those standards. The fifth step is to apply a standardized development agreement where applicable to ensure applications for municipal infrastructure are met if the proposal requires a change in municipal infrastructure. So as far as the process that led us to today, we had public information sessions that happened, four of them in March, one of them in April, and four of them in May. And after those winter and spring 2025 open houses, then we took the information away to finalize the new rules, and now here we are today at the June 2, 2025, public hearing. Again, this presentation, along with recordings of the virtual public information sessions and along with the summaries of the frequently asked questions, because we received hundreds of questions from the community, we combined those questions and made them simplified in some regards and then answered them in the frequently asked question portion of winnipeg.ca/infillhousing.
Thank you, Hazel. That concludes your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. We'll now go into questions of the public service. Counselor Mays?
Thank you for the presentation, and obviously, a lot of work has gone in over the past 18 months by people from the public, people around this table, and people in the civil service. So I think it's a better document than it was. Still some amendments to come, in my view, but it's certainly a better document than it was. Three things. Firstly, on the obscure Dawson Trail secondary plan here, and I'm happy to wait until after lunch to get an answer on this. Dawson Trail is the area roughly east of the Mint, if you can visualize it. It has had four different councillors in the four terms I've been here: Counselor Vandel, Counselor Elard, then Counselor Nation, now Counselor Wyatt. There were some very detailed provisions requiring funding from the developer that were part of that approval way back when. Mr. Kostick might have been our clerk on that one, now that I think about it, as well as a very specific park naming that was in there that I wouldn't want to see lost. So maybe over the lunch break, if somebody could...
Still there.
Speak to us. Okay. So yeah, if I can get some feedback on the developer requirements, or maybe you have this off the top of your head.
We have, Madam Chair, we do have other members of the public service available by Zoom. Evan Allen could answer this question if you would like him to at this time, or... Thank you. Evan Allen? Counselor Pawati? Are you... Okay, sure, I'll get you on the list. Thank you. Evan Allen?
Hi. Can I just get a repeat on the question, please?
Are we likely to run past noon hour here, Madam Clerk? I think we are.
We are going to recess in 10 minutes.
Well, I'll leave off on that for now. I'll come back to it after lunch, maybe.
Sure, and maybe Kent Allen will join us here in the chamber.
All right. Evan Allen. Because it's Counselor Wyatt seems to have one understanding. I just want to make sure he's correct. Okay. The phrasing was used, "The heights are going to be the same as they are today, except obviously for the 39-foot maximum for fourplexes within 800 meters of walking distance of frequent transit corridors." I think there's one other nuance. The infill guidelines lowered height limits from 35 feet down to 28 feet, or the average of what was near you, to paraphrase, for twos, threes, and fours. We are not touching the 28-foot limit for twos or single families, but we are increasing the height for the threes and fours in mature communities where you're more than 800 meters away from... Well, for threes and fours, I think we're increasing that height limit as well as the 39-foot. I don't think we did that back last year.
Thank you. Hazel?
Yep.
Rob Costiop will answer this one.
Yep, through the chair. Yes, the bases being increased by 2 feet from 28 to 30, and it's still the 30 to 35-foot range for mature communities for threes and fours.
Okay. So in honor of Counselor Elard, who spotted this at the council seminar, I think, so the, I mean, is it some incongruity then that you've got? I'm not sure where I'm going with this question, so I'm just going to talk to the speaker. We all get the fourplexes. You have to allow up to 39 feet if you're within 800 meters. That's easy. It's like, so on the fours where you're not within 800 meters, there's the incongruity, and same with threes. In the mature communities where we've been trying to stimulate population growth, you're limited to only 30 feet, but in newer communities, you'd actually have a higher height. You'd have 35 feet for the threes and fours. Is that... I'm indebted to my colleague here for spotting this, but it might have been Counselor James, it might have been Counselor Elard, and we talked about this at RIEL. So, Madam Speaker, then, so the height limit in the mature communities for threes and fours would actually be lower than in newer communities?
Thank you. The answer, the response?
And through the chair. Yes, it would be the 30 to 35 and based on averages next to the neighboring properties.
Okay.
Next question. I think James Beach would like to add to that.
To clarify, Counselor, in recent communities across the board in R1 single-family zoning, the maximum height is 35 feet. So in recent communities, we are saying the maximum height here can be 35 feet, and that's what it is in today's zoning bylaw.
Yep, that's fair. Third question. Our budget talks about Winnipeg being one of the most... Winnipeg's housing market remains one of the most affordable in the country, and the presentation that was made around malls and corridors, I think, talked about the affordability crisis in Winnipeg really being in terms of low income to get, not the need here, the shortages for lower-income, more affordable rental units. And I know we made an amendment in malls and corridors that I don't have in front of me about requiring some, I don't think it was accessible units, but it was about affordable units. So I guess my question here is, wouldn't it help address affordable housing if we could put in a threshold here? I mean, we did say, it's right there in our original application, it's right there in the frequently asked questions, affordable housing target 25%. So I guess my question is, if we need more low-income affordable housing units, shouldn't we be putting in some sort of floor as part of this process?
Madam Chair, part of the dialogue at the malls and corridors that caused council to choose to only require a portion of affordable housing for 300 units and higher, so for proposals that were, you know, had a significant number of housing, is your dialogue back then was because part of your goal is to create this naturally occurring affordable housing that is not mandated? And so allowing that to happen, you're still going to end up with some smaller dwelling units that will hit those naturally occurring affordable housing thresholds and also would allow you to go that route. So, I mean, that's a debate for council, but that was your eight Housing Accelerator Fund initiatives plus your multiple other initiatives that are ongoing through different granting and tax increment financing streams within the city today, as well as many of your partnerships with the province seek to deliver those affordable housing numbers. So this was just one of, an additional one that doesn't have those targets in order to, you know, allow folks to be able to still do this even when construction costs and labor costs are rising and don't always allow you to be able to deliver an affordable unit.
Next question?
I think, final question for now. So in short, the council did amend then, the, on malls and corridors, there was an amendment from council that the federal government obviously okayed, because we never heard back, to require affordable units of structures of a certain size. But nevertheless, there was a council amendment about affordable housing that clearly didn't get bounced by the federal government.
Thank you. The response?
Yeah, through the chair, Counselor. It should also be noted, when we talked about parking requirements, when people provide affordable units in their proposal, they get a .15 parking requirement. So there's another incentive that may tweak some affordable provisions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to recess and reconvene at 1:30. I'd like that to be 1:30 sharp, please. Thank you. I'd like to reconvene our council meeting, special meeting of June 2, 2025. We're on the section where we have questions of our public service. 2nd, 2025. We're on the section where we have questions of our public service. Next speaker is Counselor Orliko.
Hello there. Okay. Let me get some of my little notes, and I get to stand up. Thank you very much. I just have a few questions, about six or seven. Just some of them are for clarification, mostly for me. We have had a number of chit-chats, and I appreciate the effort you've put into trying to address some of my, some of my concerns, and I see them addressed in the bylaw, so especially around the trees. I super appreciate that. But I just, so for some clarification, and I think Mr. Kiernan maybe misspoke, but I heard him say that an elevator be required for two stories, above two stories, it's three stories and above, correct? So it's four, four stories?
Madam Chair, through you, it is, an elevator would only be required for four stories, not three, two, or one. Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. We just wanted to clarify, point of clarification to them, to you, Madam Chair. The other one is, one that we haven't talked about, but I've had a number of people from the ward concerned about the environmental impact of these homes going on combined sewer areas. Can you give us a little bit of background when, when buildings, new developments are built with type and would require to retain water on site?
That would require what, sorry?
Retention of land drainage water.
Thank you. The response?
Oh, let Rob Costiop.
Through the chair. We actually updated our frequently asked questions to help address that as well, and that was fairly recently posted, so our apologies. But the question that we have that might best answer is for people in the gallery and on the floor.
Yeah.
Is how will site control of land drainage or wastewater be accomplished to meet Clause Eight of the Environment Act license for combined sewers, was the question we had. And the answer is, the Water and Waste Department reviews multifamily residential proposals such as triplexes, meaning three units, or four plexes, four units, at the development permit stage to ensure that there is no increase in flow to combined sewers per Clause Eight of the Environment Act license. Typically, developers build land drainage controls to offset any increase in wastewater flow to the combined sewer from that development. So that's taken directly from our webpage now.
Yeah, so I read that as, they're going to have to have something.
Yeah, correct.
It's a good answer. Thank you very much, but it was a little wordy, so I just want to get to the quick one. They will require some form. Next one question is regarding the front yard. I see the front yard setback being set up in the way that it's, the houses beside it. I think that's fair. River Heights Port Gary is generally a twenty-five-foot setback, some odd ones or not, like Waverly has a different one. But regardless of that, then I get a little confused about the enclosures, the patios and the stoops. So if, what I question is, the twenty-five-foot yard setback, are we allowing enclosed patios to go out, I think it was twelve feet into that setback area, or is that part of the actual, actual, no, it's not. So is that what's happening for the, in this model?
Thank you. Hazel?
Yes. So the minimum front yard setback is the greater than either ten feet or the shallowest front yard setback of the buildings on the two abutting properties with the same zoning designation. So I'm reading now from fourteen-four, which is shown in Figure Four, or where an abutting property is vacant than the next closest development lot with the same zoning designation on the subject lot. So that's your first question. Then your second question is, yes, but how far can porches encroach, and they can, they may project into front yards by up to twelve feet in the front yard, but never more, never closer than ten feet from the front of the lot line. And often, the front of the lot line is significantly far back from the curb. So you would need to look at, at a plat of the lot line, so something like Ivy U, in order to see exactly where that lot line is. But it's usually further back than it might seem. Usually, it has enough space between the lot line and curb that it could, at some point, be able to have a sidewalk, even if it doesn't have one today.
Right. So the, an enclosed, correct me if I'm wrong, an enclosed patio could, out of its twenty-five-foot yard setback, it could take up about half of that. So you'd have a projection of, into the front yard setback of possibly twelve feet of an enclosed structure that is quite solidly built. Is that correct?
It could never project more than twelve feet into the front yard, and the porch, not the patio. The porch may be fully enclosed, provided that at least sixty percent of that enclosure is glass.
Okay, so I've definitely had that as a discussion between, and I'll be looking at doing an amending motion on that one. Enclosed versus not enclosed being always a different standard. And so I'll be looking at making it not enclosed patios, just FYI. Now, the other one with that, so you have your twelve-foot patio, enclosed patio, and then you have the steps to get up, I think it was four feet, six feet, I'm not sure it was. So is that on top of the patio? And so you got your twelve-feet patio, and now you have your stairwell or whatever, your five-foot elevation to get into the patio, into the house size. So now we're looking at seventeen feet? How does that work? To the administration.
Madam Chair, to the Counselor, no, no, the twelve feet would include the steps into the porch. You say patio, but it's porch.
Porch.
Yeah. And then on the side yard, Counselor, for your next question, I anticipate, the side stoops can encroach up to two feet.
Right. I'll probably be looking at dealing with that one later, as well, I think that's, again, we talked about privacy issues there. The other question I had, and we did discuss this, but I didn't see any movement on it, so I just wanted to let know why. As we know, many of these units are going to be four plexes. You're not going to know who actually owns a building, if it's a developer, or if it's, whose unit is there, which, there may be some conflicts that arise. But how is a person who has a conflict with someone in a fourplex going to be able to know who that is and how to contact them to resolve the conflict?
Thank you. The response?
Yes, through you, to the Counselor. Currently, currently, there's no rules that we're proposing that identifies who owns which multi-unit building.
Okay. Thank your answer, as you told me before, so I just want to clarify that. Can I get another clarification question? I'm pretty sure this is the right answer. I bet you can tell me if I'm wrong. The building height, thirty-nine feet, thirty feet, twenty-eight feet, that is, that is from the ground, not from the top of the first story, which is generally in the basement suite, five feet up. So it's from the thirty-nine feet from the ground, not from the first story, i.e. that'd be, whatever, that'd be forty-three feet. That's correct?
Thank you. The response?
Yes, that is correct. The building height is measured from the, the ground to halfway up the slope of the roof, if there is one.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I just want to clarify it for the public. There's been a lot of emails, and I do thank you for the amount of effort we put into this to try to reach out. A lot of people didn't get the information or haven't received it. I've done what I can. I know the city's done what they can. But a lot of the comments are talking about, Counselor Orliko, you have to approve this, because we're going to save green space by not opening up precincts. There's no intention right now, I know, because we did the chief peg was trail, that we're not going to be opening up precincts if we do this.
Thank you. The response?
Maybe could you clarify your question, Counselor?
So we have precincts that are underdeveloped on the outskirts of a city, that are contiguous to the city, that are just big empty fields, but they're not ready to be serviced, they're not right now. But the contention of some people have talked to me and said, well, we don't need those anymore, so you're not going to be doing those. And I said, I don't believe that's true, and I know from the chief peg was debate, that is not true. So I just want to clarify for the public record. Just because we approve these, housing, these new infill or zoning changes, this does not say precincts in the future will also not be opened up.
Yeah, Madam Chair, through the Counselor. No, the whole precinct planning and precinct priorities, those are all laid out in complete communities. Those aren't changing. When a precinct is ready to come forward as a secondary plan first, we won't be saying you cannot come forward. So everything in complete communities and our phasing plans, et cetera, are still unchanged.
But our Winnipeg does establish a policy to encourage at least fifty percent of anticipated development to be in fill, so nothing in this is changing.
No, and we've been, we've been doing very well, we've passed that right now. I know that fifty percent number, we're doing, we're past that already, so that's great. I don't mind that. Just clarification question again, and I got a little confused about the driveways for a duplex lot of fifty feet. If they have a back lane, a paved back lane, they wouldn't be allowed to have a driveway, front driveway?
Correct.
Good. That's why I want to make sure of that. Now, this will be a little rear-idecentric, and Fort Gary, that's where I'm from. So there's a map in there that says the airport vicinity protection zone, and you see one of the maps has the lines that squiggle through it. I know there's Zone One, where you just can't build, and I think we're partially Zone Two, part of the River Heights, River Heights neighborhoods are in there. What does that mean to those people living in that quadrant of the ABP?
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah, through the chair. That, that basically means that you, you need to be certain noise mitigation standards and building performance standards, but you can do multifamily.
Then that's the clarification I'm looking for. Some people thought that they're excluded.
It's, Area One is excluded for multifamily. It's, Area Two is permitted.
The right one. Okay. And just have to do noise mitigation. I've heard you that. So, yeah, that's a catty question. Oh, the last one I have is, and I know there's no, we may have to do this after this vote regardless. One thing that I personally believe, and I've actually had two as-of-right ones now that I've gotten calls on, is the surprise factor, I'm calling it. So all of a sudden, they see a house, the neighbor sees a house getting ripped down, they didn't have any, they had no notice, obviously, as-of-right, and they really want to know what's going on. They just say, what's going to be built here? Right now, we don't have a mechanism to even let them see that, or, as I said before, people are not red tape, they provide valuable input. They may say, you know what? That HVAC system over there is really going to cause me problems, could you move that as a request? Is there any consideration to trying to find a way to allow residents either at the permit stage or the development plan stage, where they could click on to see what's going to be built beside them, and to allow them just to have some input that maybe make the development even better? Is there any, any thoughts, consideration for that?
Thank you. The response?
Sure. So we've been tasked with creating as-of-right zoning, which, which certainly does not require consultation with neighbors. However, permits online will always have the information about what is being proposed next door, and so you can search permits online
Very good.
with any address and see what's being proposed that way.
That's very, that's a very good answer. Thank you very much. No more questions at this point.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Pawati, followed by Counselor Edie.
Thank you very much. I saw the presentation and appreciated that, you know, the colors indicated where the high-frequency transit routes are as of June 29th, 2025, the new plan's coming out. Is that hardcoded into the bylaw, or is that subject to change based on what transit does? Northeast Winnipeg, East Caledonian, North Caledonian, along Gateway Road have traditionally not had high-frequency transit. It's only being introduced in parts of it, at least, later this June. If eight, six months, twelve months, eighteen months from now, we find it doesn't have enough update, because it's, you know, fairly low-density housing today, would, and they take away the high-frequency transit in that area, does that map automatically change, or is it hardcoded into, like, the zoning bylaws and such?
Thank you. The response?
That, the map that indicates where the up-to-thirty-nine stories for four dwellings per lot only, that would not be automatically updated. That would just require another motion from council. However, it is based on transit's forward-looking plan at the moment, so this is what they are projecting for the next five-year period, and should council want to change that. But again, that would just be that extra four feet in height is the only thing that transit map really changes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Edie?
Yes, thanks, Madam Speaker. First thing, I didn't quite hear the full answer. Our public service referred to ours Winnipeg in sixty feet or something? I didn't quite hear the full answer to. If I could get that repeated, it'd be great.
Thank you.
I think I understand what Counselor Edie is asking for. Is it regarding the setbacks and also regarding where the, which lots have more restrictions on them?
Which what, sorry?
Oh, are you, is the question regarding lots that abut rivers and creeks?
Right.
Could you restate your question, Counselor Edie?
You know what? I'm having trouble hearing the public service in some circumstances. My, okay. Anyway, I was just wondering, you know, maybe I'll get something. So ours Winnipeg, Madam Speaker, was proposing something like a hundred-feet buffer or something regarding rate of four units and, and/or four stories as well. Can, I'd like to understand, I believe there's a twenty-five-foot buffer. Is that from the riverbank, or is that from the front property line out towards a street or another property?
Thank you. The response?
Thank you. Now, I do understand the question. I appreciate you restating that. So yes, there were two changes to the draft bylaw based on the requests from another, number of groups, including ours Winnipeg and Save Our Seine, that included increasing the rear setback for any buildings on the, on the properties that abut the four rivers, being the Red River, the Assiniboine River, the Seine River, and the La Salle River, as well as the four creeks, being Orman's Creek, Bun's Creek, Sturgeon Creek, Anturo Creek, Truro Creek. And for those, instead of that ten-foot rear setback from the property line, instead, it would be a twenty-five-foot rear setback from the property line. Those larger three-hundred-and-fifty-foot setbacks would frequently go all the way through the property line and across the street. So at this time, that was one of the changes in response to the groups who are looking for those larger Greenway and Blue Way biodiversity corridors. And, and then the second change was to restrict three-unit dwellings that they may not be located on any lot that is in a R1 zoning district and that abuts those four rivers and those four creeks, and also further restrictions on any four-unit dwellings, that those must not be located on any lot that is locate, that is in the R1 or R2 zoning districts that also abut those four rivers and four creeks. So those were the two changes based on those requests.
Okay. So, Madam Speaker, and just for clarification, even if it falls within the eight-hundred-meter distance from a frequent transit, is that right?
Yes, that is correct. Yes.
Thank you. Next question, Counselor Luke's?
Thank you very much. I would just like to clarify again, when the public calls city counselor and says, what's being built there, or what's going in there, could you just clarify what the public service is putting up? I hear that people are to go to the permits online, but they're not going to find permits online. They're not going to know that right away. If they call their counselor, we'll direct them to permits online. But I think we talked about, well, I know we talked about this before. Could you just recap for all of us what you're putting up in the way of information, and where people can contact or go to if they want more information?
Thank you. The response?
Yes, Madam Chair, through the Counselor. As you remember, in malls and corridors, we do have a requirement, because they're much bigger projects, much larger developments, there is a posting requirement prior to building. For the twos, threes, and fours, there's no posting requirement that way, as we mentioned. But on our website, infill.ca, we will have links to permits online. People will see that on our website and be able to search that link with an address.
Thank you. Next question?
So, I mean, I guess this could be, this could be an amendment or a motion or something, but people are usually more concerned about their neighborhood than what's going on, let's say, on Pembina Highway, or Henderson Highway, or whatever.
let's say, on Pembina Highway or Henderson Highway or whatever major corridor there is. I'm glad we're doing that on the major corridors. But, so you're saying there's nothing, nothing. It'll just be something happening, and they'll call the councillor, and we'll direct them to permits online. That's basically what the answer is? Is that correct?
That's correct, councillor. It's as-of-right development is, is what we've been directed to try and enable here.
Thank you. Counselor Orliko, would you take the chair?
Yes.
And I'll be asking a question or two. I appreciate the presentation you put up, the slide deck on page six, Mr. Deputy Speaker. It listed community benefits and impacts. I wanted to talk a little bit, have the public service elaborate and talk a little bit about the bullet, some properties experiencing shadows cast by adjacent residential buildings. Now, we're talking about people's sunshine that they enjoy in their yards, I presume. Can you elaborate on that? Mr. Deputy Speaker, to the public service.
Thank you. Who's want to take that one?
Yeah.
Or who?
Deputy Speaker, to the councillor. Whenever there's new development next door, and perhaps if the existing home is just a bungalow and a two-story is going up next door, there will be additional shadowing, depending on north, southeast, and west, where it's located in terms of the sun path. But yes, that's, we are highlighting that there will be some impacts, just as if you moved into any lot on any site and something was built next to you and was a larger scale. There will be impacts, and we're acknowledging that there, there will be some impacts in addition to shadowing.
But I think also important to say, Madam Chair, oh, whoops, sorry.
See, carry on.
Okay. Is that, you know, the, the existing maximum heights are not materially changing except within 800 meters or a half a mile from transit. So, those sorts of shadowing could already happen today, just with the construction of a new single-family house at the maximum applicable heights.
Okay. Deputy Speaker?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Speaker. And also the bullet of reduced privacy, if they could just elaborate and tell us what they heard from residents at the number of public sessions that were held. Privacy will certainly be reduced. And what did they hear from the public on that?
Very good. Response?
Sure. And so, in a similar sense, the existing setbacks and lot coverage and heights aren't really changing that much from what is there today and in many instances are not changing at all. And so, you still would have that same proximity to your neighbors. However, additionally, for anyone who is building a two, three, or four-unit development, they will be required under Section 28 of, which is fencing, to install a fence along the lot lines. And in this regard, would, would be offering some additional protection for privacy to the neighbors.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Deputy Speaker, we heard that the heights won't change very much. But in, I mean, it's a fact that in some neighborhoods, there are established homes that have been there for a very long time. So, when a new home is erected, the, the enjoyment of sun in one's yard would be quite different likely. That is true, correct?
Administration?
Yes, that could be, that absolutely would be true. But it would also be true in the case of someone building a larger, single-family home as well.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Speaker. I'll take the chair back. And thank you.
Counselor Duncan's on the list.
Counselor Duncan, over to you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a couple of points to start off here. Quick question on the creeks and how they were selected. Could you inform us through you, Madam Speaker, of how that was done by the public service?
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Speaker, to the councillor. The creeks selected are the ones listed within our existing waterways bylaw. And the waterways bylaw requires permits for any building, construction, change of grade, any sort of development on the lot requires a permit within the waterways bylaw. These four rivers and four creeks are listed in the waterways bylaw.
Thank you.
If I may, Madam Speaker, is there any creeks that are, that are omitted from this that the public will be asking, why not my creek?
Thank you. The response?
There may be. There are some smaller creeks within the city. Say, for example, Sturgeon Creek is not listed.
I think it was.
Oh, Sturgeon Creek is listed. La Salle?
La Salle River.
Listed. There may be, councillor?
Thank you.
We'll have a better look at that. Just another question, if I may?
Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, looking at the 39 feet, 800 meters from transit that we speak of, I know this is throwing some guesses in there, but is there any way to approximate or approximate how many lots in Winnipeg would be subject or percentage of lots that would be subject to these 39-foot structures that would house up to four units?
Thank you. The response?
If you would just give us one moment, Michael Pill is answering that. He would just need a moment to calculate. So, if we could come back to that answer.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Orliko?
Thank you very much, Speaker. You got me on the other privacy issue. I just clarify right now that there are stoops, I think you call them, to allow it on the side yard. Would be, there has to be at least two feet back. But they'll be, they'll be about five feet higher. Is that correct? If they built it such a way where they had the first floor in the basement, which is about five feet, they said, elevation. So, I'm going to go in my house on the side. I have to go up five feet and then into my place on the side. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, through you, to the councillor. That would only be true if people are doing a daylight basement. And you'll notice that the vast majority of our illustrations, actually, I think all of our illustrations don't, do not show that daylight basement because the majority of folks that we talked to who were interested in doing this type of infill were unlikely to build those. So, we did not illustrate that. But yes, you are correct that if someone wanted to do a stoop or vestibule under Section 21 of the draft bylaw modifications, then that stoop might be as tall as five feet above grade, which would basically just be the side entrance or the rear entrance to one of the units.
Yeah, specifically talking with the side. But thank you for the answer, which leads me to my other question. It's on privacy as well. So, now we walk up five, five feet to our, on our stoop, and we looking right into my neighbor's living room because those are at ground level. So, you can wave to them every time you're going into your house. But that also puts into the other factor of windows. Is there any consideration on the windows on the side of the house? Have to take consideration of privacy for the neighbors? Any, anything in there on that?
Thank you. The response?
No.
There's not really a lot of, okay, so if there is a, a side balcony, they are required to do a privacy along the side that does face the neighbors. But otherwise, it would just be very similar. So, those, those would require a privacy screen on any side-facing portions. But otherwise, it would just be like a second-floor window that looks into a neighboring yard today. It would be that similar dynamic. So, there is not additional privacy screening being proposed. But however, if, if the, if a side of a building is within 10 feet of the other side of a building, then the, the building code starts kicking in as far as the amount of openings you can have and, you know, sometimes requiring glass block or some other more durable materials. So, if buildings start getting very close together, that would, that would start limiting privacy, or that would start supporting privacy as well.
Thank you very much. And that would be the 8% glazing, which mentioned in the bylaw. Minimum of eight, like 8%, is that right, the number, glazing on the side? But it's a minimum amount, not maximum, which I may be trying to change later on.
Yes, that's right. That's under Section 25.1B, that, that any building facade that's facing a street, but not necessarily facing your neighbor. So, only for the street facing as measured between three feet and eight feet above each finished floor, that 25% of the front facade, like facing the front street, would be glass. And 8% of the side facade, but that's only facing a side street, not facing your neighbor's home.
So, is there any restriction? Could I put 50% of my house, my development being all glass facing my neighbor? Is there any restriction on that? But you wouldn't, but maybe you could.
Response, please.
It would only be if you were starting to get within that 10-foot side setback, that the building code would start to kick in, and that would start to limit your opening sizes precipitously. But otherwise, no.
So, because I'm talking about the grid rights for Gary and the fact that we're looking at four-foot side yards, and there'll be many, many buildings that'll be eight feet there on the adjacent side, what would be the maximum glazing allowed on a building like that? That's for, there's only eight feet from the, from the home on the other side.
Thank you. The response? Get back to the councillor?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for now.
That's it for me.
Mike Pill, do you have the response for Counselor Duncan?
He was asking for five minutes, four minutes ago. So, I'm not seeing his answer quite yet, but I will let you know as soon as it comes.
Thank you. Counselor Rollins?
Thank you. Madam Speaker, I'm going to hearken back to Counselor Duncan's question with respect to the four creeks and four rivers. Riverbanks are part of our natural services. So, are creeks in terms of, in, in terms of the way we work ecologically to, within the city of Winnipeg. Ours Winnipeg had very specific things that they've consulted with the public service on, and perhaps many councillors, as you know, Madam Speaker. If the public service could respond to their implicit ask, I guess that's in fact my question, Madam Speaker, for the public service. Did the public service respond to their specific ask? If not, why not, with respect to the protection of creeks, streams, riverbanks they were seeking?
Thank you. The response?
Sure. So, we did reply, respond to them as much as we could within the parameters that we felt might be acceptable to us still fulfilling our half-contract commitments. And so, their request of, of extending the protected areas 350 feet on each side of the four rivers and 250 feet on each side of the four creeks would take, would remove the majority of properties that, that abut those rivers and creeks and would also frequently go across the street to other properties. So, we felt that what, what we are proposing here, which is a significant limitation on the development capacity of those lots, would still achieve many of their, their requests. I would also just like to remind you that those requests, those types of, of, of properties could already, the, the same sort of lot coverage and the same sort of height could be built today on these properties with just a single-family detached home. So, even though these protections are reducing the, the number of families that could be in that home, the massing and the overall size of those homes are the same. So, yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Rollins?
Just appreciate the response. If the public service has anything further to elaborate on with respect to that.
Yep. Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, to, to Counselor Duncan's earlier question, there are two additional creeks, Beaver Dam Creek and Normand Creek, but they are not listed. They are both very small creeks.
Thank you. Moving to Counselor Mace.
I hate to move from that lovely discussion of whatever Beaver Dam Creek is to something more mundane. Two questions, I think. One, I think is directed to Mr. Kostiak as our sewer person for today. Just for clarification then, so, none of this amends the sewer bylaws. So, the same provisions would apply if you're putting in a two-unit build, duplex or a single-family home with a secondary suite. You're not having to put in the land drainage connection. If you're doing multifamily, the three or the four, you would be obligated to put in the land drainage, the LDS system.
Through the chair, yeah. Confirmation from Water and Waste is that's, that's where that could be considered to the, through the permit for it. It would be through the three units or four units.
Right. Okay. Yeah, that's, we've had this debate a time or two. Okay. Moving over then, if I can, just a couple of questions about Section 10, I think it is, in the proposed bylaw. And I sense Dylan Harris warming up in the bullpen here, ready to come in if needed to answer some questions. Two things. I'll start with the, the criticism first and then, then end with a more positive agreement, I think. So, the first question was the, Section 172 of the existing zoning bylaw says if you've got multifamily, you've got to have a driveway, not, not parking aisle, not parking stall. You've got to have a driveway that's 16 feet wide. This would amend that down to 10 feet wide. So, right now, you, I think if it's, if it's over two-family, you're, you're needing 16 feet. I think, there's Mr. Harris. He's been another month with us yet, I think. Good to see you. So, change is going from 16 down to 10 in terms of width, and that would extend for the full length of the property to where, wherever that driveway would, would end, would turn into a parking aisle or stalls. Is that, all of that's correct?
Thank you.
Hi, folks. Can you, is that ready-to-go question for me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Madam Chair, yes, the, the purpose of the, of the driveway is to provide access to the parking area, which includes the stalls or the, the aisle that allows vehicles to turn into the stall. So, there's additional stipulations in this schedule about narrowing the width of a driveway. It also says how close it can be to property lines.
Right. Okay, thank you. And then, I think a question either for Mr. Harris or, well, I guess through you, Madam Speaker. And the Section 10 talks about driveways, and they can't, they can't get closer than 10 feet to the rear property line. And we already heard some helpful comments about opaque fencing going in. It's not just driveways we're talking about here, though. There would be, I think, a friendly amendment to say parking stalls and parking, I'm not sure if anything rides on the difference between parking aisles or drive aisles. I'll leave that to Mr. Harris there, but I think it's parking aisle. So, in other words, you can't, and run this by saying, well, I didn't put the driveway right next to the fence. I put the parking stalls next to the fence, or the drive aisle. It's, it would, in keeping with this, there'd be a 10-foot buffer, and then you'd have to do the parking area aligned as the developer would see fit in terms of, do the parking stalls go north, south, or do they go east, west? I guess that's the question. Just for clarity, the public service, would the public service support putting in an amendment that would say, yes, driveways in this particular context also includes yes, driveways in this particular context also includes parking aisle and parking stalls?
Okay, thank you. The response?
Yes.
There we go. All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor Gilroy?
Yeah, one of the questions I had was, can you please walk us through some of the changes you had around trees and shrubs?
Thank you. The response?
Sure. Yes, there is a more robust set of landscape standards in this document as a result of the community input and councillor input. And so you will see those planting standards starting in section twenty-nine. And so it talks about what is required and where. And so lots must contain no less than one tree and four shrubs if the lot is thirty-five feet or less than in width, and must contain no less than two trees and six shrubs for lots that are greater than thirty-five feet but less than fifty feet in width. And three trees and six shrubs for lots that are greater than or equal to fifty feet in width that are located in R1 or R2. And then two trees and six shrubs for lots greater than fifty feet in width that are located in RMFS. But in addition to that, section twenty-nine-five also gives credit for preserving existing trees. And the amount of credit that's given is based on the diameter of the tree. So in table one, which is preservation of existing trees, for deciduous trees that have a minimum caliper of the preserved trees as seven and three-quarters inches, that would be credited for two of the required trees, regardless of where you are. And a coniferous tree that is a minimum height of twenty feet would be credited to two trees. And then a deciduous tree that the minimum caliper is eighteen inches, that would, that would give you credit for all of the required trees just because it's having a significant drip line and taking up a large portion of the property. And then for a coniferous tree that is a minimum height of thirty-three feet, that would also be the trade-off for all of the required trees.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Chambers?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to the public service. I asked the question this morning with respect to side yard, side yards on properties that are forty feet wide and smaller. I noted in the presentation this morning that you said, it says four feet or three feet. I have concerns with the three feet. As witnessed this past weekend in Ottawa, I was on a tour and saw some houses that had the three-foot side yards that seemed to be quite small. Concerns that arose in my mind are drainage, safety in terms of firewall, and what was the third one? Access, access to backyards. Is there the potential just to have it at four feet? I know that would impact the size of the home, taking two feet essentially away if it's three feet on each side going to four feet on each side. How does that impact in terms of massing or percentages of building on property?
Madam Chair, so one of the persistent concerns we heard from the community is very tall buildings. So relaxing that side setback a little bit, and in some situations, relaxing the lot coverage a little bit would allow people to keep the heights down. And so that's one of the reasons that on lots that are less than fifty feet wide, the proposal is that on one side of the building it could be four feet, and the other side of the building that could be three feet. But then if lots are fifty feet wide or bigger, they require a four-foot setback on both sides. Another reason we were proposing that three-foot setback on one side is if you have a mature tree on one side of the property, it just lets you kind of respect that tree and have a better chance of maintaining it. So that was the rationale behind those proposed side setbacks. But I don't, I couldn't opine on if you changed it to four-foot side setback all around, if there would be any concerns from our...
Builders.
From, yeah, from, yeah, from the builders or from potentially the federal perspective.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, councillor Mays.
A number of residents had written in or appeared at meetings talking about the unique, now, certainly sounds British, concept of the considerate constructor and some sort of code for considerate construction. I wish we'd had such a thing for several years, based on some experiences in my ward, but I guess a twofold question. There's nothing in here that really goes to that. You know, oh, we have to clean up within X amount of time, that sort of thing. And B, I know Mr. Comack, who is on the delegate list and hopefully will attend and who's been very, has been very good in this, really, very willing to talk, has talked about, well, make, you know, everyone should have to, everyone who's building these things should have to be a member of the Malleable Home Builders Association. Now would at least regulate it somehow, some accreditation, some professionalism. How would the public service feel about that, I guess? So two questions. Is there anything in here that kind of mandates considerate construction? And B, what is the public service view on mandating? If you want to build a three-plex or a four-plex, you would have to join the Home Builders Association.
Thank you. The response?
Madam Chair, yeah, for the first question, there's nothing in this proposal that regulates impact to the street, cleanup, construction, et cetera. That's handled in some of our other bylaws, like the Neighborhood Livability bylaw. I think Public Works also has some bylaws about what can happen on a public street when you're building, how you have to flag if you're going to leave something on the street. You have to have barriers overnight, et cetera. So there's nothing proposed here for that. That's already handled, we feel. In terms of home builders, haven't contemplated that. I'm not sure how that would impact our approvals, et cetera, if we make a restriction like that. Something we could look at and investigate, but I don't think it's a question we could answer here now. And I wanted to refer back to councillor Chambers' question about side yards and just wanted to point out that today in the bylaw, in R1S, a single-family, our smallest lots, you can do two, three-foot side yards today in the bylaw, or a two-foot and a four-foot. So these regulations are actually making those side yards a little bit wider at three and four, and then four and four for the bigger lots. Just clarity there.
Thank you. Anything further, councillor Mays? Councillor Earlco?
I do respect the fact we have a lot of delegations here. But this is our one chance to get some of these questions out. So, and some of the questions are getting led from other people's questions. So my last question, I hope, who'll see where we go. Land drainage. Right now, if you can clarify me, that some pumps can be drained either to the front yard or to the backyard?
Thank you. The response?
Yes, that's correct. The land drainage bylaw, I don't know what the exact term is. It's underwater and waste. The bylaw requires either to the back of the lot or the front of the lot.
Yeah, I think you've heard me mention how the front of the lot, especially if you have a, what do you call it, porch, enclosed porch, that's going to put a lot of wire in the front street sometimes. So I'm not sure about that. I'll be straight up. Looking at that tonight in my amending bylaws. But my other one is the HVAC systems. Is there anything in here that prevents developer in the side yard, putting the, on the ground, putting their HVAC systems there rather than either on the roof or in the rear of the building?
Thank you. The response?
Yes, councillor, there's no requirements within this proposal in terms of the bylaw and where HVAC can go. I believe in our existing bylaw, there is some language around that. If, maybe if we ask Dylan Harris, is there anything around air conditioning, HVAC, et cetera, for residential?
Thank you. Dylan, you've heard the question?
I did, Chair. Through you to the councillor. We formerly did regulate air conditioning units in our permitted projections table. We don't. It was removed. It's now managed through Neighborhood Livability based on a noise, a noise law.
Thank you. Okay, no further questions? Madam Clerk, we'll move to delegations, beginning with those in support.
Correct, yes. Our first registered speaker in support is Tyler Crichton, and Tyler's joining us via Zoom. So Tyler, if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself and turn on your video, you have five minutes for your presentation.
Tyler, are you present with us? We'll come back possibly, Madam Chair, the next delegation.
Max Schreckenbeck also joining us via Zoom. So Max, same instructions. If you want to go ahead and turn on your video, you have up to ten, or five minutes for your presentation.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Hello everyone. I am pleased to appear before you today in support of your agenda to re-legalize more housing options in more neighborhoods. And I use that word "re-legalize" very intentionally. Make no mistake, what you have before you today is not some radical new proposal, but a return to more traditional patterns of zoning and city development, a return to the way in which many of our most beloved neighborhoods, from St. Boniface to the Exchange District, to the Corden area, and many more, were built. Many of these neighborhoods, as well as almost any older neighborhood in the city, would be illegal to build today. This includes the narrow-lot homes in the North End, the mid-block multifamily in Daniel McIntyre, and the mixed-use corner stores of Elmwood. Winnipeg is in a housing crisis. We can see it all around us, both at the more acute end, in terms of people sleeping rough in parks and on riverbanks. However, Winnipeg also has a significant shortage of market-rate housing, particularly at the entry level. As someone who has been recently looking for my first home, I'd like to share some of my experiences with you. In particular, I would like to address the assertion, which I've heard from several people, including more than one city councillor, that they're tearing down perfectly livable $200,000 to $250,000 homes to put up newer infill developments. Let me put it bluntly. In today's market, if a house is livable, it is not selling for $250,000. And if it's selling for $250,000, it is not livable. Give you a couple of examples. One of the first homes I ever bid on was a eight-hundred-square-foot bungalow built in 1930 in the Glenwood neighborhood. It had an unfinished basement, which was dry, good bones, but needed a lot of work, including a new roof, chimney, eaves troughs and downspouts, soothage, fascia, asbestos basement, boiler replacement, a new kitchen, and new windows. The perfect place to put in some sweat equity, right? Sale price, $327,000. Second place I looked at, a seven-hundred-square-foot bungalow from 1947. Finished basement, but it still needed a new roof and chimney, an arborist to deal with some of the trees which were overgrown, and some other minor work. Sale price, $411,000. The third house, an eight-hundred-seventy-square-foot bungalow, again, 1930. Finished basement, nicely renovated, moved and ready. Sale price, half a million dollars. I could keep going, as I have many more examples, including from several friends my age in similar situations. However, I would also like to address one other aspect of affordability, and that is property taxes. This past budget, we've had the highest property tax increase Winnipeg has had in decades, at 5.95%. In his campaign, Mayor Gillingham committed to 3.5% annual property tax increases. According to the city's own data, if approximately 2% of single-family properties were redeveloped to four units, that would be equivalent, almost equivalent, to 3.5% property tax increase. One home every two blocks redeveloped into a four-plex, and we wouldn't need to have a property tax increase on existing homeowners at all next year. I don't know about you, but I'd much rather have a couple more four-plexes scattered around the neighborhood than another property tax increase. Finally, although this proposal is very good, and I strongly support it, I'd like to suggest two ways in which it could be improved. First, the entire primary transit network should be used when calculating height limits, including the direct lines. In the Winnipeg Transit Master Plan, the primary trans network is called a permanent tool for city building. As such, we should use all of it when we're making transit-based city-building decisions, including height limits. Secondly, although the proposal contains a slight reduction in parking mandates, which is a good step, these should be eliminated entirely. Why are we still forcing housing providers to subsidize the most expensive, dangerous, and environmentally damaging form of transportation? With those two changes, I think you really have a good proposal for moving our city forward into the, really into the 21st century in a more sustainable way. I thank you for your time, and welcome any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, no questions today. Appreciate you coming down to speak here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next presenter, we're going to go back to Tyler Crichton, joining us via Zoom. Tyler, if you can go ahead, you have up to five minutes.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Perfect, beautiful. Thank you so much. Yes, hey, my name's Tyler Crichton. I'm here today to express my support in the proposed bylaw changes because I want to see our communities thrive, be more connected, and make start our homes a reality, and have a space for our senior population to age in place. We stand at a pivotal moment. We can choose a path towards sustainability, a better functioning city, and start to tackle the housing crisis. Or we can maintain the status quo based on continued service cuts and growing deficits. When we were looking for our first home, we wanted to stay in the neighborhood I grew up in. We put in countless bids, bids, often getting outbid by tens of thousands of dollars each time. Eventually, we had to move to a different area, leaving behind the place that we loved, and had to start from scratch. Years later, after we found, or after we got some good equity, we tried returning again. This time, we needed a home that suited our evolving needs. Ideally, a well-built duplex where our parents could live in a separated suite, allowing us to care for them as they aged. However, such options were limited. Many of my friends dream of homeownership, but it seems out of reach due to limited and expensive options. We also see our aging population struggling. They want to downsize and remain in their neighborhoods where they've lived for decades. The lack of suitable housing forces them to leave their communities. We need more flexible housing options in our existing neighborhoods to preserve our community fabric. These zoning changes, while not perfect, are a significant step forward. If you love your neighborhood, you should want more people to enjoy it. More residents means stronger community connections, increased safety with eyes on the streets, vibrant neighborhoods, and more support for community, local community centers and local businesses. Our city's current model of low-density sprawl is financially unsustainable. We can't keep up with the city services and maintenance and infrastructure that we already have. These developments don't generate enough property tax to cover the costs. This affects essential city services like pools, library hours, community services funding, bridges, roads, and parks. These services will continue to decline with our current growth pattern. When over eighty percent of our costs are roads and pipes, we need to figure out a new way to look after our city's financial obligations. Some may worry about parking, snow clearing, and traffic with increased density. Instead of viewing these as roadblocks, we need to find solutions. And the new transit system is one such example of that. Some may argue that three-feet clearance to the property line isn't acceptable. This means a minimum of six feet between each home, and often might be larger with existing properties that are there today. There are several desirable communities in Winnipeg that look like this already, but we've stopped allowing them to be built. Take a walk down an older, mature community, and you'll find that this is already in place and working today. But if the same structures were to burn down, you wouldn't be able to build them again due to our restrictive zoning laws. Others might say that new housing won't fit the character of the neighborhood. But what truly defines neighborhood character? Is it struggling community members, deteriorating streets, service cuts, and neglected parks? Or is it the presence of a few new building types and styles? The housing crisis and our city's financial health are serious issues requiring bold solutions. Cutting services like city staff wages and flower pots is not the answer. We need to reinvest in our existing communities and make the most of our existing land and infrastructure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tyler. There's no questions today. We do appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Have a great day. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Madam Clerk?
Sorry. Our next speaker is Dylan Martin, also joining us via Zoom. Dylan, if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself, you have five minutes. Dylan, if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself, you have five minutes.
Hello, Madam Speaker. To City Council, I'd like to start off by telling you a bit about myself. I am an off-reserve citizen of Burnland's First Nation, was born in Winnipeg, and grew up in the North End where I lived with my father until we moved to Thompson for my grade eight through 12 years.
Dylan, would you like to, Dylan, would you like to put your camera on? I'm not sure if it's working or not.
The camera is not working.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So where I lived with my father until we moved to Thompson for my grade eight through 12 years, I moved back to Winnipeg for post-secondary education during a time of disastrously low vacancy rates for renters, seeing the effects of an overly tight rental market on tenants, and doing a story on the topic for The Uniter. For all my time in Winnipeg, I've lived in mature communities, including the North End, Lord Roberts, the Talbot Grade Part of Elmwood, West Broadway, and the Chalmers section of Elmwood. I see the promise and potential of mature communities under a policy agenda that focuses on smarter growth and renewed public and private investment, a policy agenda that allows for more options and more choice in housing. Because today is ultimately about choice, it's about letting people have more options for more types of homes in more places, it's about more opportunities for arrangements like those enjoyed by an older relative of mine, arrangements of living in a duplex next to their daughter, and being able to stay close to the family and look after the young kids from time to time. It is about more opportunities for folks like that woman in her late twenties, I know, who loves South Osborne and is able to live within walking distance of the Bridge Drive-In ice cream shop, thanks to affordable rents of a secondary suite. And it's about more choices for the many Winnipeggers, myself included, who prefer to live near transit in complete communities where you don't have to drive everywhere for every single errand. The opposite of these options and choices is the monoculture of single-family-only exclusionary zoning, which freezes many areas in amber as families age and needs change. Exclusionary zoning forensals many opportunities for growth and adaption in Winnipeg and puts the thumb on the scale against builders interested in incremental infill and towards low-density greenfield sprawl as the easiest path. This overextends our infrastructure burden and can result in unwelcome impacts, such as the clearcutting of agricultural or forest land on the fringe of the city as the passive least resistance compared to committee, after committee, to build any multifamily infill in our already developed urban neighborhoods. Some have lamented these bylaw changes as an extreme, and that they will lead to immediate radical transformation of the city, but the reality is much more mundane. Increasing what you are allowed to build does not necessarily change the economics of what is feasible to build and earn a return. There are lots zoned R1 or even R2 in Winnipeg that are vacant. Homeowners in existing houses are not going to suddenly demolish their homes to build at greater densities just because there's fewer hoops to jump through after these changes. What these bylaw updates really allow is a bit more flexibility to redevelop homes approaching the end of their lifespans and to meet the current and next generation's needs. In some respects, Winnipeg is behind the curve on modernizing our zoning. Edmonton, Saskatoon, and Regina have eliminated parking minimums for new builds. Under this proposal, Winnipeg sets them at one off-street spot per unit, especially around frequent transit corridors where we should hope to gain more transit riders. The city should consider eliminating them and letting builders and buyers decide how much parking they want. Thank you for your time. I hope council will adopt these zoning bylaw changes to allow more homes in more places, prevent the erosion of Winnipeg's affordability advantage, and enable our city to evolve to meet the changing needs of individuals and families.
Thank you, Dylan, for your presentation today. Thank you. There's no questions. Council will now have a 10-minute recess, and we'll reconvene 3 o'clock. Thank you. I'd like to reconvene our special council meeting of June 2, 2024, 2025. We are on hearings. The hearing body, the hearing is before us, and we're hearing from those in support of this application. Now, there's many people in the gallery. We probably won't get to everyone today. Council will be adjourning around 5:00 p.m. So tomorrow, when you come back, we will begin at 9:30 in the morning, and we'll get right into delegations. If you're not sure when you're speaking, there is a list that's published on the city website, and if you need any specific questions answered, one of the clerks would be happy to come see you. Okay, so five, around, in and around 5:00 o'clock, we'll be adjourning. Madam Clerk, next delegation.
Our next speaker is Mel Marginet, joining us via Zoom. Mel, if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself and turn on your video, you have five minutes.
Hello, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Members of Council and Mayor Gillingham, for hearing from me today. My name's Mel Marginet. I've presented to a lot of you folks before, often on behalf of Green Action Center, where we promote sustainable practices in the home, workplace, and beyond. We've already submitted a written delegation there, so I'm not going to speak too much about that. We just talked in that submission about how great these changes are to have more people living where there's established infrastructure, close to transit, bike and walking routes, and how important it is to the financial sustainability and the environmental sustainability of our city. In that as well, I had sent a link to a really great report. It's called Cities in Transition. It's from the International Institute of Sustainable Development. So we're seeing a really big shift from these kind of big organizations recognizing there's not enough to just electrify, and really looking at the fact that we have to just change our urban design in terms of environmental sustainability as well. And so it's really important to read that report. Winnipeg is the case study in it, and the author, Zach Rempel, sorry, my dog is being a little bit growly here. Zach Rempel is here to speak, and he's a few people after me, so I'll let him answer questions about that. I really wanted to speak a little bit about my experience at one of the open houses. So I went to the open house at the Convention Center. I really like to go to these open houses, just to kind of be a fly on the wall, to really get out of the bubble, hear what people are in favor of, not in favor of, just to, as an advocate, kind of be able to do a better job of like answering questions, seeing where there's disagreements, those sorts of things. So as I was going around the displays, I noticed I was kind of in the group with these two ladies who were very much opposed there. So I was kind of noting what they were saying to each other, those sorts of things. And then at one point at one of the boards, you know, they kind of turned to me of like, ah, don't you agree that this is terrible? And so I was like, oh, no, I'm in, I'm in the conversation now. But it was really great. So I just told them that I was actually very much in favor of these bylaw changes. I was able to speak with them about my struggles with housing since moving here in 2001 as a university student, and all through my adult life, struggles that my peers have been having, most who have given up on homeownership. They realize they're just going to be renting forever, so just that threat of rent eviction is always hanging over their heads. And then, you know, and I was able to hear some of their concerns as well, and just to use my experience, you know, I'm not an expert in this area, but I've done a lot of research in it over the last five or six years, just connecting, just how connected sustainable transportation is with urban design as well. So able to answer the questions, one of their big ones that, you know, concern they had was that, you know, that we were going to be paying for this as like the taxpayers, that it was going to be the city putting up the housing, you know, so they were concerned about that, not realizing that it's, you know, it's not the city that's building the housing, it's just the bylaw changes. And actually, one of their big concerns was actually kind of in support of the changes as well. So they mentioned that they were in St. James, and, you know, they're like, well, why is this happening everywhere else? And why can't, you know, the lots, we have these empty lots, and they're never being developed, and they're just ignored? And I was like, oh, well, funny, you should mention that. These bylaws will actually make it easier for those lots to be developed right now. It's just very hard. There's a lot of restrictions on them. It costs a lot of money to get permissions, you know, but with these changes, it'll just be a little bit easier, not just for a developer, but just for an everyday person to perhaps develop, you know, do something with those lots in the future. And then I was just able to share some resources with them as well, just books that I've read over the years, talk to them a little bit about Strong Towns, and encourage them to do some reading there. So, yeah, it was about 10 minutes. A lot of other people had kind of joined in our conversation as well. It was really nice, you know? So a lot, you know, kind of like these hearings, you know, you're either for or against, but in our case, I mean, we were really for the same things. We want to live in good neighborhoods with good services that we can afford, and to take care of things, and to be more financially sustainable. You know, so I think that that says a lot about kind of the future of Winnipeg, and that there's just a lot to be hopeful for, and that, even though it can seem like there's a lot of, you know, people who are against changes like this, I just disagree. I think, you know, that no neighborhood should be immune from change, but no neighborhood should have.
No, that concludes your speaking time.
Okay, great.
That was five minutes. We do appreciate you coming today. I don't see any questions at this time.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
Madam Clerk, next delegation.
Okay, our next registered speaker is Fanny Concan, also joining us via Zoom. Fanny, come on.
Hi. Can you guys hear me okay today?
Yes.
Okay, I gotta take my headphones off, because I can hear other people in my ear. So I just want to say good afternoon, Members of City Council and fellow Winnipeggers. My name is Fanny, and I am here today to express my strong support for the proposed zoning bylaw changes. My hope is that these changes will help the city of Winnipeg facilitate development of not only more housing, but housing that is more inclusive, more accessible, and better designed to meet the need of all Winnipeggers. Personally, I live with multiple disabilities and have faced consistent barriers in Winnipeg. I've lived here for over a decade, and during that time, I've routinely found that I've been excluded from either services or forced to pay significantly more just to meet my basic needs. But, and yet, I still consider myself one of the lucky few, because I can actually still drive a car for now. And that's where my concern lies, when I think about my future housing needs, and when I think about these zoning changes and how they could positively impact the disabled community of Winnipeg. So for me, my neighborhood, Richmond West, is very unwalkable and quite inaccessible to me. There are few sidewalks, and there are no amenities close enough for me to reach on foot with my cane and limited mobility. And when the day comes that I can no longer drive due to progression of my disabilities, I will have almost no access to my community, and I will face a major loss of independence. So when I realized this, I started looking into other areas of the neighborhoods of the cities that might be more suitable, and overall have been quite disappointed with what Winnipeg currently has to offer in terms of accessible housing and just accessible communities. So, for example, I lived in Osborne Village for a few years, and at the time, I thought that that could be a good option for me and my potential future as a wheelchair user. But after living there for several years, there was many occasions when I saw wheelchair users forced into the street and dodging cars because the sidewalks were either completely over or crumbling and buckling. And that's not safety, it's not accessibility, and I don't think it's acceptable. I think it's no secret that the city of Winnipeg is in a budget crisis, and it's become clear that it can't afford to provide the services needed to make our communities truly accessible. Year after year, there aren't enough funds to keep the sidewalks clear of snow and ice, or provide adequate Transit Plus service, or support the development of accessible housing in communities that are actually themselves livable for people with disabilities. I think too often, people with disabilities are expected just to stay home and not engage with their communities, and pay extra for services like grocery delivery or taxi to daily errands, because the infrastructure around them simply isn't usable. And that's why these zoning changes matter. This is a necessary step towards building a city that works for all of us. I think that these proposed bylaw changes are a commendable effort to increase housing density and diversity, and specifically that they have the potential to allow a broader range of housing types, to give people with disabilities more opportunities to find homes that meet their needs, such as barrier-free units in walkable and accessible neighborhoods that are close to essential services and not so sprawled. The bylaws could potentially open a diverse mix of housing, and it helps build neighborhoods that are welcoming and supportive of people of all ages and abilities in all stages of their life. Lastly, I, and most importantly, I really hope that today's city council understands who their constituents truly are, because according to the federal government, one in five Canadians currently lives with a disability, and as the baby boomer generation ages, that number is expected to potentially reach one in four. So our city's housing stock is absolutely not ready for that reality, and I think these zoning changes won't fix everything, but they are an absolutely essential start, and the zoning changes just make financial sense in the long term. So in conclusion, I am urging the city council to approve the proposed zoning bylaw changes. It's not, this isn't just about increasing density, it's about increasing equity. It's about building a more inclusive and accessible Winnipeg for everyone.
Thank you, Fanny. Any questions for the delegation? Okay, no questions. Fanny, I have a question for you. Do appreciate your presentation today. You talked about accessibility and equity. What are your thoughts on having one of these units accessible when it's a larger fourplex, let's say?
I absolutely love that if that was, if there was some sort of, sorry, I can hear myself in my ears, I've had to mute myself. I would love if there was some sort of goal or something for each first-level unit to be this many accessible. I even saw in the CMHC, like the Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation, I think, they have that housing catalog where there are units that are accessible, like totally wheelchair accessible. I think that that would be potentially a great amendment, just, but really just more housing in general, I think, will give a lot more options.
Okay, thank you, Fanny. Councillor Luke says a question.
I just want to thank Fanny for all her advocacy for accessibility and for housing. We dialogue back and forth, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Fanny. You have a good day. Our next delegations, I believe, are in person. Madam Clerk?
That's correct. Our next delegation, Thirindu Kotagoda, is joining us in person.
And I'd like to ask Stephen Snyder here, if you could come down and wait. Thirinder Kotagoda, please come forward. Is Mario Manuel Lopez here? You'll be next, sir. Following that, I believe we'll go back to virtual, Madam Clerk.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
So I don't see.
On the bench, no, on the bench.
All right.
Stephen, you're next. Thirindu?
I thought you just came over.
Thirindu?
Okay, we don't see that presenter here. Steve Snyder, yes.
My apologies. Good afternoon, Council. I will be very brief, because I understand that this is going to be a long process. You heard Dylan speak about housing, or sorry, parking minimums. I sent to the infill housing email address a list of similar cities in both Canada and the US that have eliminated parking minimums to no great detriment to the city at all, as well as a couple, three, that included parking maximums for certain uses. I think that that is something that definitely should be added to this, although I do support it. It should be added to this particular zoning amendment, as well as consideration, Fanny brought up, the CMHC's designs. I think that we should consider looking at a standard design, approved design. Some people think that it might cause too many, too much conformity within a community, too much sameness. But I live in Scotia Heights, along with Councillor Ross Ede, and we.
I live in the Seven Oats neighborhood, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I don't live in Scotia Heights.
Okay. And we have a lot of diversity of homes in that area, despite the fact that a lot of those are Sears Roebek homes. So you bought them from a catalog, they were all the same as they came to you, and there is a lot of diversity to those different homes, even though they were a standard product. So yes, I hope you consider those two, two changes, or two additions. But in its current form, I 100% support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions today? Seeing none, thank you, Steve, for your presentation. Madam Clerk, next is?
Next is Mario Manuel Lopez, joining us in person.
Thank you. There'll be five minutes on the clock. Welcome.
Hello. Hello, Council. I've been here a few times now, speaking as an advocate for affordable housing. And in this case, not only do I support the motion, but I highly encourage that it actually be added on to. Let's be quite honest here, when we look at areas such as the North End, and Mayor Gillingham, I believe you and I have a mutual friend with Daryl Warren, with the William White Neighborhood Association, he'll tell you there's 90 boarded-up homes right now. White Neighborhood Association, he'll tell you there's 90 boarded-up homes right now in William White, and that's just a tip of the iceberg. And I just want the council to understand, from our perspective as landlords in the North End, first of all, we're taking a huge risk by being in the area, unfortunately, in this environment. But right now, we have a boarded-up home. The city doesn't want this, fire department doesn't want this, nobody wants this, neighbors don't want this. But right now, we can do a duplex. I go to the bank and I ask for a mortgage, $400,000 mortgage to build the duplex. They ask, okay, how much are the rents? Well, a duplex in the North End is not going to rent for much money. They look at the application, they say quite simply, there's not enough revenue. Mortgage is not denied, period. House continues to be boarded up. Now, if you allow fourplexes, right? And I would actually go in further and say that in areas such as the North End, on 33-foot lots where it's already zoned R2 and there's a back lane, I would actually go further and say a fiveplex should be allowed as of right. Because now with a fiveplex, I go to that same bank and I say I have five rents coming in, all right? Guess what happens? Application approved. Now I can do something with that building. And regarding the parking, make it mandatory that three units have to be affordable, which would be one parking stall, it's .15 of parking ratio per affordable unit, and then the other two parking stalls would be market rents. So now you've just built a fiveplex, three affordable units, two market rent units, fitting within the three parking stall ratio. Now you've created a completely different situation. Property taxes are much, much higher for the city as compared to what they're getting now from the boarded-up home, which is virtually nothing. You have three families that now live in the home, sorry, five families live in the home, three affordable families, fire department's happy, neighbors are happy. So not only do I support this, but I think it should be increased in areas such as the North End, in particular, William White, streets such as Pritchard, Alfred, Manitoba, and Magnus. The lots are 33 feet wide, is already zoned R2, back lane, I don't see any reason why they can't be at least a fourplex, if not a fiveplex, in that area. This is, in my opinion, and you can speak to other landlords in the area, one of the only, if not the only way to save that area in terms of boarded-up derelict homes. We cannot pick up the free press without seeing an article about these homes. Now, in other areas of the city, this isn't as desperate, but in the North End, West End, but specifically William White, this is seriously a tragedy. So the council not only has the power to approve this as of right, but I think in areas such as the North End, 33-foot lots, zoned R2, back lane, it should be increased to fiveplexes. And if you do that, honestly, I would go further and say that, send out a warning letter to all the existing landowners and property owners that are boarded up and say, okay, we've now made it as easy as possible for you to move forward and do something with your vacant property. And you have one year, and if you don't do something within one year, which is either apply for a permit or sell it to someone else that will do something, then we're going to stick you with the biggest fine that we can possibly stick you with. Now, sure, these fellow landlords may not agree with what I'm saying, but I'm telling you that if you give them a chance, an honest chance, which is a fiveplex, then you've given them a chance, and in that case, if they don't follow the rules, then stick them with the big penalties. So again, that's just an opinion from a local affordable housing provider.
Thank you. We have questions. Counselor Ede?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Mr. Lopez, for coming and speaking to this, your support. I just want to point out something. In terms of the right to build four, if, like, if you have enough land space, that it's tied into how many square foot per unit, as you know, I know you're working at trying to develop a couple of lots there on Stella, that, like, did you know that it's based on, do you have enough square footage per unit?
Yeah, it's 800 square feet under the R2 zoning and 400 square feet if it's a residential multifamily large.
Right, right. So you've seen that, right? Okay. So, um, so it's tied into how many square feet? So you're talking about 33-foot front lots, being able to go to four or five. Some lots are 33 and very, and very deep, I guess, not so much in the William White neighborhood, but in the Dufferin neighborhood, definitely, where you have deeper lots and you might have square footage. So, um, so, um, so you're aware that the possibilities with a 33-foot and going to four or five units, that's very difficult. You're going to be applying for variances, right?
Yes, unfortunately, right now, that's why I would go further and say that as of right would include five units specifically in areas such as the North End.
Right. And I'll just, did you know that Magnus has sections that don't have back lanes?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Chambers?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to the delegation, like the way you think. With respect to fiveplexes, though, would sewer capacity issues prevail in this, in this area that, of the North End? Because I know it's still part of the combined sewer network.
Yes, obviously, there are sewer capacity issues, but what happens is that if, because a lot of these properties, like a lot of these 90 boarded-up homes are spread out along the streets, there are sometimes situations, I'm working on some projects in the Dufferin area where sewer capacity is there. Now, if I had built, for example, three fiveplexes next door to each other, then there might be a challenge, but because they're spread out, the city has already informed me that they can work with that. But regardless, once you pass a duplex in the city, you have to have a land drainage design. So as soon as you pass that, you're already into the land drainage. So whether you go to a four or five, it doesn't really increase the cost.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Mays, followed by Counselor Orliko.
Question for the clerks, I think, and I, I'm not necessarily opposed or in favor of what you're saying. I don't really, haven't really thought that through, but, I mean, we have a publicly posted bylaw process here that's called the four-by-fours or the two-threes-fours. Jurisdictionally, counsel said counsel would be the hearing body for the twos, threes, fours. So I, again, I may well love the idea, but as part of this process, it would seem, out of our jurisdiction, start going to fiveplexes.
There is a rule that we can't grant more than what's applied for, but we would have to go back and see if that would actually qualify as well.
Okay. And I mean, the other complexity is the infill guidelines have sections that pertain to fiveplexes and then low-rise, and the fiveplex section has, I won't read it out, it's to the credit of Mr. Veach and others, they borrowed from it, coming up with the setbacks for the fourplexes for this process. But in essence, you've got to have 10-feet buffer to the side and the back if you've got a fiveplex. So you got, you don't, like, your parking area, if you have a parking area in the back and you're 33-wide and 20's already gone for buffer, you're, I just don't think geometrically it could work. But I just think for today, I don't really think we can get, I don't know if we have the jurisdiction, but I thank you for coming and speaking and might be worth taking a look at, I really don't know the earth.
Thank you. Was that a question for the delegation or just your? Any other questions for Mr. Lopez? Okay, seeing none, thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Okay, we had someone on the list of registered speakers, Andrew Enz, he's no longer available, so we'll move on to Lanny McInnis, who's joining us via Zoom. Lanny, you can go ahead, you have five minutes.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Lanny McInnis, I'm the president and CEO of the Manitoba Home Builders Association and the executive director of the Urban Development Institute of Manitoba. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of our collective members regarding the proposed amendments to Winnipeg's zoning bylaw. I'd like to begin by extending our appreciation to the public service for the extensive work that has been done in preparing the report and the proposed bylaw amendments before you today. Specifically, I would like to thank and commend Director Hazel Boris, James Veach, and the entire team at the Planning, Property and Development Department for the tremendous work that they have done throughout this process. I'd also like to thank DPZ Co-Design and Landmark Planning for their work in helping craft the proposed amendments and facilitating the public and stakeholder consultations that helped inform them. Both the MHBA and UDI Manitoba were key stakeholders in the development of these amendments, and our members were happy to provide expertise and insight to assist the city as it crafted these zoning bylaw amendments. These proposed changes provide a balance between trying to make it faster and easier to build housing in established neighborhoods while still protecting community character. And while not perfect in the eyes of some of our members, our two associations support the proposed amendments. It is important to remember that as of right does not mean without restrictions. New two-unit, three-unit, and especially four-unit dwellings will not only have to comply with the requirements and restrictions outlined in the proposed bylaw changes, they also have to make economic sense to build. The proposed changes, along with the realities around the city's servicing capacity, building code requirements for complex buildings, and economic factors, will not likely lead to a significant increase in four-unit dwellings being built in Winnipeg overnight. But what these changes will allow for is to make it easier to have projects that meet all of these requirements and make economic sense to be approved and ultimately built faster than they are today. And that's a positive step, step for addressing the increasing cost of building new homes in Winnipeg. We encourage all counselors to support the proposed amendments, and we thank you for the opportunity to be an important stakeholder in this process, and thank you very much for your time and the opportunity to speak to this item today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Mays?
Are we standing for this, or can we remain sit?
Your choice, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Duncan. Lanny, your group has talked about, I mean, you've thrown them out with me, which I appreciate, I've related some of the implementation difficulties that have happened in parts of my ward with, not, it hasn't been threeplexes and fourplexes, of course, it's been, it's been duplexes and... Your group has talked about trying to regulate, trying to require developers to belong to Manitoba Home Builders, maybe UDI, I don't know. We had some discussion of that earlier. Anything you can add for us about what, what can we do to create a more considerate contractor type of regime? Because that, that, I mean, I've been, you know, I've had over 1,000 calls from the Glenwood area, quite frankly, and there are some people who pretend that didn't happen, but it did. So, you know, certainly Veritas Construction, I don't think I've ever had, you know, has been terrific to work with, so I'm not casting aspersions on all the developers here, but anything we can do, mandate, mandate owner membership in your group or what?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, thanks for the question, Counselor. We, a bit self-serving for me to say that we would like the, the city to mandate all builders be members of ours, and all builders likely couldn't be because of the requirements that they need to, to meet the standards that they need to meet, to be a member of our association. But having said that, what these changes hopefully will do, and what we've heard from a number of our members who used to do infill development and have moved out of that, that area, is these changes will encourage them to take another look at doing infill and for builders who are prominently greenfield builders to, to look at that as well. And so those positive changes, or those changes should be seen as a positive result if, if council supports this and builders are encouraged to, reputable professional builders who are members of an association like the MHBA, look at doing more infill housing than they, than they do right now.
Thank you. Any further questions, seeing none? Thank you, Lanny, for your presentation today.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Our next presenter is Zach Rumpel, and just want to remind all folks joining via Zoom to just turn on your camera when we've called your name, but not before then, please. So Zach, if you want to go ahead and turn on your video, you have five minutes.
Welcome, Zach.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Hello, everyone, thanks for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Zach Rumpel. I work at the IISD, the International Institute for Sustainable Development. We are Canada's largest environmental research organization with a head office here in Winnipeg. I'm a member of the Canada Energy Team, and we help federal governments across the world and in Canada as well as here in Manitoba create effective energy and climate change policy. So I wanted to speak about some of our climate change research as it relates to infill development in Winnipeg. So I spent the last year of my life developing a research report on the role of city governments in climate change. It's called Cities in Transition. This report analyzed how the design of our cities impacts energy use with a specific focus on the city Winnipeg, where, pardon me, there are ways to design cities that use a lot of energy, and there are ways to design a city to use a smaller amount of energy. And one of the main points of this research is that city governments have a very important role to play in terms of emissions reductions. Even though programs like, for example, carbon pricing are run through the federal government or provincial governments, the design of our city actually has a significant impact on emissions, and infill development relates directly to this. So from my perspective, I would say that city design is actually more important for reducing emissions compared with policies like the carbon tax or building up renewables. That's because the design of our cities has a much bigger impact on emissions reductions and climate change than is commonly understood. So all across Winnipeg, I mean, our, our city is full of neighborhoods where it's not possible to walk, bike, or take a bus comfortably, all the places you need to go to go to work, school, et cetera. I, I mean, to, to live like a complete life without a car is very challenging, that's what I mean to say that, in many neighborhoods. We've designed a city in such a way where, where you need a car to get all the places you need to go. These low-density, car-oriented neighborhoods require tremendous amounts of energy. If people are living in isolated places where they cannot have access to the places they need to go, they're reliant on energy-intensive means of transportation. Studies show that places, that car-oriented, low-density places produce at least twice as many emissions compared to more compact livable communities. So countries in Europe, for example, produce 50% fewer emissions than we do. This is an enormous gap, and it's not that Europeans care twice as much or are working twice as hard or anything like that, their cities are just built very differently, and this has a direct impact on how many emissions they're producing. So I'm, I'm here to say that infill development is a climate change issue. Barriers to infill development means that we're locking ourselves into energy, into high-energy development patterns. In sustainable development, we use the term infrastructure lock-in when we're talking about pipelines or, you know, oil and gas infrastructure, things like that. But this term also applies to our built neighborhoods. So essentially, this decision on infill is a decision about climate change infrastructure. Cities across Canada and around North America are increasingly realizing that walkable, compact communities are not just nice to have, but essential to achieving climate change goals. So for example, Vancouver has made walkability the cornerstone of their climate change strategy. It's their number one, what they call their number one big move in their Climate Emergency Action Plan. They aim to have 90% of people living within an easy walk or roll of their daily needs by 2030. Edmonton, in the heart of oil country, has become a national leader, in fact, an international leader on, in zoning reform. They've achieved many, you know, many of these things years ago already. Meanwhile, Winnipeg is at serious risk of falling behind, and in some ways, we already have. While other cities are taking these steps to redesign their urban form, we are still expanding outwards, building expensive infrastructure and missing the opportunity to build vibrant neighborhoods where people can live locally. So in closing, I just wanted to say that I'm asking council to treat infill as a climate change issue and as well as a community building issue. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a question. Councillor Mays?
Very quick. Zach, that would have been a terrific presentation when we did the malls and corridors piece, I have to say, which was all about existing shopping center, mall, parking lots, and major corridors. But we're amending, we're making, we're allowing more development rights in any number of precincts here. Southwest corner of Waverley West, southeast corner of Sage Creek, the sea of mud that is Dawson Trail right now, South Ridgewood, south, anyway, precinct after precinct, and we just voted to open up three more precincts with the Chief Pegwas Trail Extension. So I appreciate what you're saying, but you are aware, this doesn't just limit development to existing neighborhoods, right? Like this, it may well be cheaper to build fourplexes in Dawson Trail east of the Mint, east of, out by Laje, than to build them in the middle of River Heights. So just, I know, I don't want to pick on you here, because a number of people have made this point, but I do feel compelled to say, this is a citywide, the federal government requires us to do this citywide. We're amending all sorts of precinct plans here. You're aware of that, right?
Yes, certainly. I appreciate that. I guess the point I was saying is that barriers to infill development are, apply citywide, and, you know, it's still, in the grand scheme of things, moving towards more sustainable neighborhoods. And even if that means more infill, you know, within city limits in the suburbs you're talking about, that's still, that's still a better thing, from my perspective.
Okay. But there's no question that we haven't built the servicing out yet to Dawson Trail, for example. So there will be increased costs from doing this, even in the new precinct areas, Chief Pegwas Trail, for example. But anyway, we've got a long day ahead, so thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Zach. Appreciate the presentation. Next, Madam Clerk.
Next up is Michael Aben, also joining us via Zoom. Michael, if you want to go ahead and turn on your video, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Michael Aben, he/him, and I live in one of our dense, older neighborhoods. By dense, I mean, we have 25-foot-wide lots. You fit tons of houses on the same block, and most of that is about 120-year-old, single-family housing. But three doors down is a beautiful, four-story, brick co-op housing building. Built in about 1914, there's about eight units in there, I think. And collectively, they put together the best Halloween experience on the block. Across the street from me is a quadplex that used to be single-family housing. That was built about six years ago. They're lovely neighbors. At the other end of the block here is the convalescent home. It's the first personal care home in Winnipeg, built in the 60s. It's also four stories tall. And the seniors who live there love seeing my toddler on her little bicycle go back and forth on the sidewalk.
Daddy, you!
My neighbors just to the right here, they always have dinner on the front porch, if the weather's good. And that's helped us build our relationship with them, since we see them often. We love hanging out with them. They taught us how to open a champagne bottle with a sword. And their neighbors just on the other side, they just moved to our block a few weeks ago. They moved from further down our same street. But they like our block better, even if the house is smaller, because all of our neighbors here have been able to build a really good community. Our block is hosting our annual block party this weekend. We got a permit to open up the street to people. We're all chipping in to rent two bouncy castles of different sizes for different age kids. Everyone's going to roll their barbecues into the streets. I'm planning on smoking two big Costco packs of drumsticks. The convalescent home, they always bring a big, huge cake, and their residents love coming out and being part of the party, because they're our neighbors. And those new neighbors who just moved in
Mike Test, Mike Test.
From further down the street, that was last year's block party that convinced them to move. They realized how good and wholesome it is to have a thriving community, to be surrounded by helpful, loving neighbors, to be part of a community with an active group chat where you can ask to borrow a ladder or a table saw, or to see if anyone is home to help jumpstart your car in the winter. And this dense neighborhood that we're in can support all of the wonderful small shops in Little Italy. The only reason you can have as many coffee shops and bakeries up and down the active part of Corden is because of all the people who live here. We help drive the economy of Winnipeg. Our dense neighborhood helps sustain the small mom-and-pop shops of Winnipeg. Now, councillors, you have all the data showing you how we need more housing in Winnipeg, and how infill housing is a smart idea, because it means the city doesn't have to pay extra to maintain additional roads and water and sewer. But I want to tell you, as someone who lives in an old neighborhood, that nonetheless has several duplexes, quadrplexes, and co-op housing buildings, that it's an extremely pleasant place to live. My neighbors are excellent, and my life is richer because of the people who live around me. So let me close by encouraging you to vote in support of these infill housing measures.
Thank you, Michael. Question by Councillor Olakow.
Thank you very much, and we actually picked out where you live. So it is a wonderful spot. So one thing we've been bringing up, and we brought up a few more times, is the idea that we have all the existing infrastructure in these neighborhoods. However, you are aware, and you definitely are aware, that many of that infrastructure is really gone. Roads are pretty rough shape, backlines are worse, sidewalks are heaving, tree canopies hanging in there. So would you agree that part of this modeling, some of the new tax revenue should be, remain in the neighborhood to start building up that infrastructure so we can actually reinvest rather than let those taxes being spread to other projects? Not all the taxes, but some.
I mean, thank you for your question, councillor. I think that you need to be able to take some of these taxes and be able to support more active transportation and more transit, to encourage people to be able to get around better. For example, councillor, I really dislike cycling in your ward, because the roads there are actually really, really poorly maintained. You can kind of tell on Warsaw Avenue. East of Stafford, it's really nice and easy to cycle on, but west of Stafford, it's, all of a sudden, it feels like you're cycling on the surface of the moon. So yes, I'd be in support of some of that, councillor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, Michael. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next.
Next up is Andrew Single, also joining us via Zoom. Andrew, if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself now and turn on your video, you have five minutes.
Thanks very much. My mic's working?
Yes.
All right. Hello, council and mayor. Thanks for the time here. I've lived in the Daniel Mack neighborhood of Winnipeg since 1995, and I want my kids to have the option of living in a thriving Winnipeg as adults. I want a city where housing is attainable and well-serviced, and a city that's financially solvent and can afford to maintain our public services. So I want to start by talking about the elephant in the room, that Winnipeg has an infrastructure deficit over the next decade of $8 billion. It's an average of $800 million a year of needed infrastructure work every year that we can't currently afford. Coincidentally, that's about what we take in a year in property taxes. So we should be looking at every city council decision from a lens of, does this get us closer to addressing this shortfall? So this is likely going to pass just because we have an obligation to meet the agreements we made with the Housing Accelerator Fund. The city desperately needs that money, and not complying really isn't a fiscal option. The question is more of, how much is it going to be diluted in terms of little amendments and changes that make this less effective? So we need to improve our city's fiscal outlook. We got to move away from a city that has one of the largest per capita infrastructure deficits in Canada. That means we either need more income per person or less infrastructure per person. Given that politicians generally don't keep their seats very long when they promise big tax increases, that means the most likely route is smart densification, where we slowly increase the city's population without increasing the footprint or the amount of roadway we need to build. That takes increasing density and making changes to allow people to live their lives without having to drive halfway across the city to do things, allowing more mixed-use developments, allowing more people to live where they, near where they live, work and play. So it means alternatives to driving, like safe sidewalks, low residential speeds, protected cycling infrastructure, and investments in transit. And it really does help when we can do those significant densifications right around the rapid transit routes. We also have a moral obligation to make housing easier to build, especially when it's affordable. When there's a housing shortage, keeping policies that make it burdensome to increase housing, particularly affordable housing, is morally unjustifiable. When you look at the traditional neighborhoods of the city, like where I live, we have plenty of housing that's grandfathered in that doesn't meet the requirements of parking minimums, setbacks, lot coverage, where there's mixed residential and commercial development. But these neighborhoods are some of the most economically productive areas of the city. So we want to encourage that kind of efficiency and not bar it. To the people that are opposed to these bylaw changes, I want to ask, are you willing to bear a doubling of property taxes to address our infrastructure deficit? And if not, where do we think the money's going to come from? Any money coming from the province or the Fed ultimately comes from the taxpayer, us. So we want to move away from a fantasy land where we think someone else is going to pay for these decisions we've made. Everybody wants to live on a nice, quiet street with big setbacks, lots of parking, but we also need homes we can afford. And living in a city means you make compromises on noise level, privacy, view, et cetera, in exchange for close access to services, work, and amenities. You know, not making these zoning changes will mean prohibitive tax increases in the coming decades. Every additional restriction we create is going to cost the city income we desperately need. These are the trade-offs we're making so we can have streets that are functional, clean drinking water, emergency services that respond to calls, and parks that are clean and beautiful. When we can create a lot of residential restrictions around where and how infill happens, it's just going to push all the infill into those particular neighborhoods that meet that criteria, meaning some neighborhoods will get flooded with development and others will have no changes at all. The city needs gradual, uniform densification, where no neighborhood is transformed overnight, but no neighborhood is locked in the past, and the entire city gradually becomes more economically productive. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our delegation? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Next, Madam Clerk.
Our next delegation is Adam Johnson, joining us via Zoom. Adam, you have five minutes.
Thank you very much, city councillors, Mayor Scott Gilliam. I am speaking in support of the amendment regarding the Winnipeg zoning bylaws to support infill housing. And I've lived in Elmwood and East Calhoun all my life, and we are currently, we're living in some interesting times, to be honest. We're facing a housing crisis. Projections here in Winnipeg of 1 million people within the next 10 years is expected. That will become a major milestone in the city itself. However, as the city continues to grow, we all need to build more, there'll be a high demand for more housing, and we need to look at for the future of our city as it continues to grow. And that's why I support the infill housing here. These bylaws may not be best, but they are certainly a step forward in improving our neighbors, especially mature neighborhoods where I live in Elmwood. And I said the dynamics have been changing in regards to housing in the city for a while, and this is why we need to support zoning laws to keep up the changing dynamics to meet the increased demand. Second, we have to become more efficient with our resources at a financial level, and we have to start building smart when it comes to housing, not build for the sake of building. We can get to have most bang for a dollar when it comes to property development and land use. We can not keep building outward every time when we need housing. We have to be clever, savvy, when it comes to our housing and economic development. Again, infill housing is using our lands more efficiently and using our financial resources better in order to build a better city for all. As author Michael Durand Wood said in his recent book, He'll Pay For This, said it best, what it looks like in the physical world is building more city on less land while using less infrastructure. Third, why I support these amendments is that we need to take care of our lands better for the environment. We are in a climate crisis, and we are seeing that with wildfires in northern and indigenous communities. Now, these communities did the least to contribute to climate change, yet are the most impacted by our decisions. And we contribute to urban sprawl. We not only impact our local city, but that trickles outwards through our overall increasing our carbon emissions. Through increased hotter, drier weather, which fills wildfires, and when it comes to building cities more sustainably, infill housing gives us that opportunity to do that. And when we support policies that support urban sprawl, fortunately, we're building more roads, pipes, et cetera. And that means, when we do this, as in recent years, we're building further and further out, not increasing the risk of overland flooding from intense rainfalls increasingly, from a warming planet, which increases carbon emissions. Now, at the local level, inner-city communities are impacted by urban sprawl, and again, they contribute less towards this, and yet are impacted heavily as well due to poor roads when we can't fix those. And we cannot continue to build the way that we have, that is not environmentally sustainable, and we need to build more sustainably to meet our housing demand while creating opportunity to revitalize our mature neighborhoods like I do in Elmwood. As well, on a personal note, as a member of the Rite of the Mayte Nation, one of the lessons that I hold dear is that we have to use our resources more efficiently in a more sustainable manner, and we must take better care of our lands. Building outwards and not using our lands efficiently is not the way to do this, by building on out further. We only have so much land and money, so let's move forward to support infill housing for our city's financial and our environmental future. Much.
Thank you, Adam. Any questions for our delegation? Okay. Don't see any. Thank you, Adam. Appreciate your presentation. Madam Clerk, next.
Next up is Adrian Jones, joining us via Zoom. Adrian, if you want to go ahead and turn on your video and unmute yourself, you have five minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak here. What I want to start with is, I think the way we're framing this debate is incorrect, because we're framing this as a debate between whether we should pass these zoning reforms or whether we should not pass these zoning reforms. But I think a more honest framing is whether we should pass these zoning reforms now with the help of federal money, when we still have an opportunity to prevent the worst of the housing crisis, or whether we procrastinate 20, 30 years and wait for the problems our city is facing to get worse, so that we don't have a choice but to make these changes. Because the problems our city is facing are not going to go away. Last I checked, the city of Winnipeg projects that our population will be 1.1 million in 25 years. So the housing shortage is not going to go away. And if we keep current zoning laws, the deficit that we have is not going to go away either, because we just aren't generating enough property taxes the way we're doing things. So these problems don't magically disappear. We have to actually be proactive in solving these things, and that's why it's the right thing to do to support these changes. It's the right thing to do financially for our city, but I think, and this is an important point, it's also the right thing to do morally. This is a moral decision. This is an ethical decision. It is simply unethical to continue to allow people to be priced out of homes, to continue to allow the cost of living to grow. It's unethical to reject federal money when we're in such a dire situation. I'm a young person, and I work a blue-collar job, and I honestly believe if the city councillors could speak to some of the people that I spend my time with and see how they're struggling to just get by in the city, then anyone with any amount of empathy would be in favor of these changes. It is just simply wrong to allow the status quo to continue. I'm also in favor of removing parking minimums. Want to put that on record. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. We have a question from Councillor Brawdy.
Thank you very much. Do you think the price of the most basic starter homes will go up or go down if we pass this policy?
Well, it's just basic supply and demand, right? If we pass this policy, there'll be more homes, so the price of the starter home will go down. And there's a lot of data to support this from other cities as well.
Do you not think if you have a very, very basic starter home, that the opportunity to sell it and put up a much more expensive fourplex becomes the challenge?
So are you suggesting that the price will go up if we make these changes? Because I believe that's just
Yeah, if you've got a house on a 50-foot lot that's worth, you know, $250,000, and you can build a property that you can rent out or sell at a much higher value, it's going to make single-family homes that much more expensive, I think, for starting individually. it's going to make single-family homes that much more expensive, I think, for starting individuals.
Well, there's a couple of things. First of all, it seems like, you know, supply and demand is a very basic concept that I think, I would assume a city councillor would be able to comprehend. And I don't really want to have to go back to that. That's really basic stuff. And the second thing is, we're not just talking about housing, as in like buying a house. We're talking about rental markets, right? So the rent would go down as well. And I'm sorry, I'm just a bit surprised by this suggestion because there's just so much data from other cities that suggests that this will reduce prices. Are you disputing that?
I think the price of single-family homes that are desirable to redevelop will go up in price a lot.
Well, that's just empirical. In order to have a conversation, we need to have the same reality, right?
Well, I agree if the concept is supply and demand, and if the supply of developable lots, you know, goes up, that's going to force the price of these redevelopable single-family homes to then move up in price.
Thank you. Councillor Bowaty, any further questions?
Where do you think federal taxpayer dollars come from? One taxpayer.
So what's your point?
Well, you're suggesting we'd be abhorrent if we didn't take the federal tax dollars. But again, you know, we're paying for those dollars. Those dollars are coming from you and me and everybody else.
I believe that my colleague is debating my word resident. And Madam Speaker, it's question and answer time.
Do you not agree that there is one taxpayer at the end of the day?
The distribution of money, right? So I'm not, it, obviously, the people who would be benefiting from this are not the ones who are primarily paying for this. There's redistribution of wealth going on.
Fair.
Thank you. Anything further? It's a little more difficult when we're doing question and answer virtual, so let's have a little pause after the question, and we'll get to the answer. Councillor Wyatt.
Adrian, are you aware we're appreciative of you coming here today and speaking?
Yeah, sorry, I got a little feisty. A lot of emotions.
Yet, make some points, but thank you, sir, for coming today.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Adrian, for your presentation. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Okay, our next speaker, I don't believe is in the Zoom waiting room, but Clara Mitchell-Enz was registered to speak via Zoom. She's no longer here, so we'll move on to Alexander Hunter, who is also not in the Zoom meeting. So we will move on to Michael Reimer, joining us via Zoom.
Malcolm or Michael?
Oh, sorry, Malcolm Reimer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Malcolm, welcome.
Thank you, and good afternoon. Very happy to be here. It's my first time speaking before a council, and I appreciate the opportunity. So good afternoon, everyone. I'm attending this hearing to express my strong support for the zoning changes in this proposal and to urge council to lean into these changes and continue taking steps to optimize land use in our city. As a young student in Winnipeg, affordability of housing is always on my mind. One of the main reasons I and many of my friends and colleagues are happy to remain in Winnipeg despite better job opportunities elsewhere is that housing here is still relatively affordable compared to other major cities in Canada. We should keep it that way and work to improve affordability citywide. Resoning to allow multiplexes as a right will increase housing supply, especially as seeking new housing will benefit from the increased supply regardless of the affordability of any individual infill units. And so I'm happy to see that these new units will also be built close to transit connections, which I believe will improve mobility, walkability of our neighborhoods and reduce car dependency. I'll repeat the statement to some of the other supporting delegates today that more housing options are good for our city, not just for younger people looking for a starter home, but also for older people looking for the flexibility to downsize and remain in their beloved neighborhoods. On the point, a point I'd like to take the opportunity to encourage the council to go beyond the rezoning conditions of the Housing Accelerator Fund. As you've heard, these changes include requirements for a minimum lot width, parking mandates, maximum lot coverages, and setbacks. And while I may understand the aesthetic reasons for some of these requirements in combination, they make it difficult to build small starter-sized housing, which could be built by the average citizen on their own. It is exactly the type of housing likely to be affordable. You've already heard, and you will likely hear concerns in this hearing about the changes this may bring to existing neighborhoods. You'll likely hear concerns about less green space as a result of infill. And I think you share that concern. When we require large setbacks, driveways, parking pads, we often reduce the usable open space on a lot in aggregate. And so instead of gardens or trees or shared courtyards, for example, we end up with more administrative payments on these lots, pavements, sorry. And so I also want to focus in on the mandatory parking requirements in particular. These are a mistake anywhere in the city, but especially for infill. They drive up building costs, decreasing affordability. And if our goals are to improve traffic congestion, reduce road wear and infrastructure costs, and to cut carbon emissions and air pollution, it is clear that Winnipeg needs to move away from prioritizing cars, personal automobiles as the preferred and sometimes the only viable mode of transportation. As we've also heard today, Vancouver, Regina, Edmonton, Saskatoon, and other Canadian cities have all successfully removed parking minimums for new developments and have seen more efficient use of land by developers. But simply put, we should not be setting aside good housing land for storing cars, especially not in infill developments close to transit corridors where we are supposedly trying to encourage more transit use. So I would urge council to remove parking mandates from these zoning changes altogether. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our delegation? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation. Next, Madam Clerk.
Our next presenter is Michael McMahon, joining us via Zoom.
Welcome, Michael.
Hello, can you folks hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Michael. I am a big tech guy, and I recently fell in, I have a lot of passion for baking. I swear this is relevant. I'll try not to take up too much of everyone's time. So a very close friend of mine has recently fell on hard financial times and needs roommate as soon as possible. I immediately started looking for work, hoping to finally get a job as a professional baker or a pastry chef. However, once I actually started laying out the logistics of it, the math didn't add up. You see, most bakery jobs in Winnipeg only pay $16 to $17 an hour. And it's very common that these are, you know, shifts starting at 4:00 a.m. and require a bunch of previous experience. Meanwhile, the average two-bedroom apartment in Winnipeg is $1,700, or split with a friend, that's $850 a person. So having a balanced diet, enough sleep, and getting a regular exercise are very important to me and things I believe everybody should have. However, I would lose almost $300 every month living that lifestyle, living a healthy lifestyle while I get exercise and I eat well and I sleep well. If I were to cut my expenses down as much as possible, I'd be living paycheck to paycheck with absolutely zero savings for my future and zero savings in case of an emergency. And this is a very optimistic estimate. This assumes, and I currently do, get everywhere by bike. So I would have zero money for a bus, zero money for a car. And if I did have a car, a used car, it would cost me more than $1,300 a month over its lifetime. And that is including everything, gas, insurance, financing, all of it. The worst part of it all is I know I'm not alone. Most people my age that I know actually still live with their parents. And that includes an eye doctor, an IP lawyer, and a software developer. Rent is by far the biggest expense on my sheet, and this is quite frankly the biggest thing stopping me from becoming the dream baker I want to be. That's why I'm hopeful these zoning changes will help me put, will help us to put more units on the market, of greater variety, and in places that need them the most. Going even further, if we stop requiring parking for every single unit, it'll allow developers to only build what's needed. So from an article from the CBC, "A Car Spends 95% of Its Lifetime Parked, and There Are Up To 4.4 Parking Spaces Per Car In Canada." What you're seeing is my local St. Vitale Mall on an average day. Not only is the footprint of the parking bigger than the mall itself, but it's barely half-full. If you look at historical satellite data, you'll see that this trend is all over the city, but especially in big-box stores. Parking is valuable land that we are letting go to waste. By no longer requiring parking for every unit, we would incentivize more alternative transport use, thus easing congestion on our roads. And it's just a simple volume calculation, as you can see here. Like, bikes and buses are far more compact in carrying people. And when you especially multiply that with things being denser and closer together, it has this multiplicative effect where it makes things a lot more efficient.
Thank you, Michael.
So before, oh, sorry, sorry, I have a little left. Before Edmonton abolished parking minimums, Ambrose Place, a new housing development, was forced to make parking for each unit. According to the city's Making Space podcast, this required parking increased the project cost by $1 million. That forced the developers to reduce the number of units by 25% to pay for a lot which mostly remains empty even today. Overall, Edmonton has seen great success in housing more people with their bylaw changes, first allowing multiple homes per lot in 2013, also called skinny homes, abolishing parking minimums in 2020, and a full zoning reform in 2024. This is just one houses I particularly like. I think it fits really well with the neighborhood character. Urban sprawl is horribly expansive. Greater densities means less roads, sewers, and electrical infrastructure to maintain. It means more accessible neighborhoods to the young, old, disabled, and everyone in between, because it's easier to walk to and bike to places that are just a couple of minutes away instead of a half-hour drive or more. It is cheaper both for cities and its residents. I want to afford working my dream job. I want Winnipeg to follow in our sister cities' footsteps. And I want to build a better, more accessible future for our children and grandchildren. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councillor May's question?
You just repeat what you had is the average rent for a Winnipeg two-bedroom?
$1,700 a month. Sorry, let me get my face out of here.
Yeah, I'm just going to cite that CMHC Fall 2024 Rental Market Report. Winnipeg's average rent for a two-bedroom purpose-built apartment was $1,229. So it's, that's like two-thirds of what you're saying, basically. But I'm not sure your source, but I'm using the CMHC Fall 2024 Rental Market. But at least you're talking about rental units here, which I appreciate, because not many people have. I guess my only other question here, St. Vitaller, I appreciate the theory that you're saying. I would love to have an LRT like Edmonton. But frankly, do you consider a 38-minute wait for a bus on Dunkirk, do you consider that frequent transit? Because that's what the city's saying. We're going to build frequent transit corridor that's going to have a 38-minute gap between buses. Do you consider that frequent transit?
I don't want perfect to be the enemy of good here. Right now, I don't think there's a single person on the street, if you ask them if our transit is good or frequent enough, will say yes, it's good enough, especially in the winter when the snow hits. So I think the proposed transit changes are definitely a good step in the right direction, but I don't think they're enough.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Michael. Have a good day. Madam Clerk.
Okay, our next registered speaker is Michael Helms, or Hemms, and Michael's joining us in person. And following Michael, we have Tim Comack.
It's a lot bigger down here than it is up there.
Michael, welcome. Five minutes.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank the councillors, the mayor, the staff, and the chair. My name's Michael. I'm a lifetime resident of Fort Rouge, and I'm speaking for the very first time in support of the zoning bylaw amendment. Winnipeg needs more housing options to make it more affordable, equitable, and livable for us all. I should also note that although I speak alone today, there are many dozens of young people, my friends, family, and colleagues, who could not get time off from work today to come. As a trained historian, I think it is important to put our current zoning regulations into their historical context and examine their origins. I've studied the patterns of Winnipeg's urban development, and I have found that our archaic zoning practices were clumsily forced upon a city that grew up without them. Apartments in the early 20th century were allowed by right within the city and greatly added to the character and viability of neighborhoods. Even today, these remnant apartments in mature neighborhoods are landmark buildings of the community. But in the 1910s and 1920s, the city was lobbied by neighborhood groups to ban them. Apartments were restricted from streets in Armstrong's Point, the West End, River Heights, parts of Elmwood, and beyond. This was not a decision based on any fundamentals of town planning, thoughtful growth, or neighborhood character. And in fact, most of these neighborhoods were brand-new and not yet defined their identity. It was one made proudly and overtly to maintain class separation based on geography and further protect the assets of the already wealthy. Our current development pattern still lives in the shadow of these bylaws. It has forced Winnipeg to spread thinner, segregate more, and create enclaves of wealth within a city of deteriorating infrastructure. Today's bylaw amendment is not radical at all. It is not breaking any new ground. It is simply reversing a regrettable decision from a previous century. As a young person who struggles with the uncertainty of my housing future due to the lack of affordable and desirable housing, I strongly believe infill and gentle density can be an avenue to achieving housing security for all people of all backgrounds and generations. Dense central living creates a more connected, sustainable city that not only serves to benefit us all. Winnipeg is not unique. Other prairie cities have already made even more impactful changes, such as Edmonton allowing eightplexes on single lots everywhere and the elimination of mandatory parking minimums. I should remind everyone that single-lot aplexes are historically quite common. My neighborhood in Fort Rouge has many such examples. Single-stair, single-lot, multi-units like this blend into the neighborhood, and you'd never know they were any different than a detached home next door. In fact, the block on which I grew up contained two eightplexes, a few duplexes, and many single-family homes. It is this mix of housing options that makes neighborhoods thrive. There is only good to be gained from having more people able to live in existing neighborhoods in Winnipeg. It limits our excess spending on farther-reaching pipes, roads, electrical, and allows us to focus the city's resources on maintaining the infrastructure we already have. This will also enable financial support for public works, parks, and community centers, which are currently extremely underfunded. Earlier this year, we found out that we would not be able to rehab our sewage system until 2095. Continuing to overextend our infrastructure through urban sprawl will just accelerate problems like this. Adopting today's motion will be a great step in Winnipeg's path to becoming a more equitable, accessible, and walkable, sustainable city. I hope council does the right thing and passes this proposition and further considers the removal of parking minimums, expansion of fourplex and sixplex allowances, and expand mixed-use zoning beyond just major arterial roads. I also strongly encourage council to use this opportunity to incentivize the construction of non-market-rate, social, and truly affordable housing to generate downward pressure on the housing market. The passing of the zoning amendment is a necessity to help curb our finance-guzzling urban sprawl addiction and allow people to buy back into the great neighborhoods in which they wish to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. Councillor May, is your question?
Yeah, that was quite eloquent. Thank you for that. Just one point on the, well, we've heard a lot of these points before, and I won't refresh the arguments. But just on the sewer, the aspect of the sewer system that is slated not to be, the work is not to be done, is entirely in the pre-1960 part of the city. It's the combined sewer system. You can't really blame people in Waverley West or Sage Creek for the combined sewer system. It's a multi-billion-dollar program, and everyone's paying toward it. It isn't just the people in the older part of the city are having to pay to renew their sewers. Everybody's paying in. So it isn't a product of some people coming in and not paying. Everyone pays toward the renewal of the combined sewer system.
Question, Councillor May?
The challenge is, it, the limits of the combined sewer system limit the amount of growth we can actually put in the older parts of the community. It actually makes it easier to put it out in the greenfield. So I guess, are you aware that everyone in the city is paying toward the renewal of the combined sewer system?
Yes, her response?
Yes, I'm extremely aware. I think it is important to mention that this is, there is no, I apologize if it makes it seem like I was blaming new development for this. The new developments and the people that live there are not to blame for any of our city's infrastructure problem. They come to live here in the city. The city is going to grow regardless of whether we want to or not. But we got to, we have to figure out where we're going to put the people, right? So the greenfield development has to happen. So as we put these infrastructures further and further out, and we already have this deficit that can't maintain the infrastructure that already is within the limits of the city, you have to imagine, right, that this is also going to put stress on the infrastructure as well. So, yeah, I didn't want it to make it seem like I was making that assumption.
Well, that's what.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. There's no further questions at this time.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk?
We have Alexander Hunter, who's rejoined the Zoom meeting. So Alexander, if you want to go ahead and turn on your video and unmute yourself, you have up to five minutes.
Hi there. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Hi, everyone. Thanks very much for allowing me to speak today. My name is Alex. I'm a resident in Osborne Village. I'm here to speak today in favor of the planned zoning amendments. I live on a residential street in Osborne. And, you know, in the last two years, we've had two new four-story apartment buildings built on my street. One of them is still under construction. I think one is 15 apartments and the other one's about 20. And, you know, I get that, you know, there's inconveniences that come with infill development. But I think at the end of the day, you know, the inconveniences are fairly minor and that, you know, we really need more housing in the city, especially more multifamily buildings, because they tend to be more affordable and especially more rental properties, especially for young people like myself. I live in a rental apartment. So it's really, you know, important for the city to keep building more housings that, you know, people can have a place to live, an affordable place to live. You know, when, when I had those two buildings built on my street, you know, there's, there's a bit of construction noise. There's a bit of extra traffic from the, from the contractors, you know, lawn street parking, you know, there's maybe a little bit less than before, but at the end of the day, you know, it's all pretty minor stuff, right? And, and I'm, I'm happy to have more people living on my street. I think it's, I think it's great that I have more neighbors now and I'm just, I'm happy that we're getting more housing being built and, and I think that the amendments planned today are very reasonable. You know, it's not a drastic change. There's some pretty reasonable limits that are set on the new developments in terms of the lot widths and whatnot. So I think it would be really great to see these amendments get passed and I, I hope, I hope that they do. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you, Alex. I see no questions today. Appreciate your presentation. Madam Clerk, next.
Next up is Tim Comack, joining us via Zoom.
Welcome, Tim.
Hello, council, your worship, speaker. Appreciate the time today to present on this. I have no script. I just want to let you know that we've put a lot of time into this as both an industry and as a company. And it's not perfect, which is a good thing because there's wins and losses on all sides. I do hope that when we get to a stage where we understand the impacts of this planning and of these amendments and start moving forward towards a stage two, that we can take some time to target areas and take a financial approach as to where perhaps we can generate more affordable housing by way of property values being the lowest and density being the highest. And that's really my only input today. I think everybody's put a lot of time into this. I've certainly dialogued with many people on it. The planning department deserves a big pat on their back for the amount of hours that they put behind this and each member of council, I'm sure with each phone call and every single ward member that has reached out to you as well as industry. So thank you. We're very excited to take this step. It's a long time coming. It's not perfect and I want to be clear with that, that all these questions and all these issues that are coming up today is because this is the best fit that could be found amongst many stakeholders. And I do truly believe that this is a good outcome thus far as written and I support what's been presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for presenter? Councilor Mays?
Thanks, Tim. Brian Mays here. Thanks for your work on this. And I know you met with me certainly in various sketches of where elevators are required and building code sections. So I appreciate that. You have in the past also been pretty consistent in saying, look, council needs to do something to regulate, to require, to professionalize the infill homebuilding sector. We've talked a bit about that today. Any thoughts on that? I want to say I've met with Kurt Swawwoski from Veritas many times, who's been pretty good at dealing with me on these matters as well. So I'm not faulting all developers, but I'm the one who gets the emails Christmas morning when people say, why are they building? Why are they building at seven AM on Christmas morning? Can't you do something? So that is not considered construction. So what is to be done in that regard? Any thoughts?
So we're a diversified real estate company. We develop subdivisions, usually outside the city. I think they'd be considered medium to larger scale master plan communities. We're proactive. We've got a set of prescribed rules. I've always articulated the council that'd be happy to share those with you. Council itself and City Winnipeg has been partners with other land developers and is privy to those types of rules as well. I think you've springboarded off one of my comments, which in some cases, in greenfield, you must be a member of MHBA in order to participate. And there's a reason for that. It's not mandating MHBA, but it's rather the litmus test to become a member of MHBA. And so I'm not advancing that you must be a member of MHBA. That'd be self-serving as a committee member of MHBA and director of UDI, which is tied to MHBA as well. I'm not advancing that, but mandatory warranty, core safety certification, a whole series of other professional conduct requirements. In that mind, I'd be happy to dialogue and sit with the planning department and help them understand those types of things. And then as early as today, as, you know, vice president of a pretty large company, I'm out in one of our subdivisions advancing another phase and I take the time to get my digital clipboard out and drive through the subdivision and check to make sure people are following the rules, right down to porta-potties, garbage bins, building wrap being fastened to the face and facade of the buildings. Are they meeting our requirements for driveway laydown for aggregates? Do they have mud on the street? And we're proactive and they get emails and they get, you know, proactive communication because we're subdivision managing and perhaps the city needs to go beyond like bylaw enforcement and look at how they can get into some notional strategy for the infill file to review these sites and hold people to a certain standard. I know that members of MHBA, through policies, procedures, checklists, you name it, professional approaches, likely trial and error and learning from mistakes and preventing those mistakes in the future, not, you know, not advancing that anyone's smarter than anyone, but when you've been around thirty-plus years, you tend to know what some people haven't learned yet. I think from that perspective, you will now attract a lot of those members back into the infill file. Not that you chase them away, but it's been more attractive to work in the greenfield communities from a, you know, production line perspective and knowing where your next sale can be and where your next opportunity can be. Bringing us back into that fold in a broader way, which I think will happen as a result of this, there's some certainty and you're narrowing the gap between greenfield entitlements and infill entitlements. You'll see a standard kind of increase and you may, by way of that, learn what it is that we do differently to make sure that your phone isn't ringing and, and, you know, perhaps we can all work together to find even better ways to accomplish that outcome. I think the number one thing we all have to talk about that has kind of, at this point, been a little bit, you know, don't look, is the number one issue within fill for us as a builder developer. The residents are number one and number two is site security and theft. And so we're gonna have to keep an eye on that. And I sooner think that that's a bigger fish to deal with right now than mandating any membership and anything, but I do think it'd be wise to figure out what criteria you need to meet in order to have the right to build. We own a sewer and water business and we have to apply to be, you know, able to cut and cap a sewer line from the City Winnipeg. And if you're not gonna meet a certain threshold, you don't have the right to do that as a sewer and water business. And we demolish buildings and I have to make an application to be accredited with the city to have the right to demolish buildings as well. So I can't see you being far offside and trying to figure out how you, you know, normalize what a builder is. I just don't know what that looks like and I'd probably cede to Lanny on what that guidance would look like. I'm chair of the infill committee for MHBA UDI and I'd be happy to sit down and try to figure out what that matrix would look like for you to give you a set of criteria so that it's not just any Tom, you know, or Joe coming from the street looking to, you know, become a builder on your back, on your overhead. It's expensive. I mean, we, we in our own subdivisions, when we sell to a private builder, which many developers won't, it's twice the work every single time.
Thank you, Tim. Next question, Councilor Lewis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Comack, for coming and presenting. While I appreciate that the amount of homebuilders comes and represents UDI, it's always good to speak to an actual developer. So you have developed a wide range of housing units over the years. I just want you to, if you don't mind, just speak to four plexes and really the cost of building a fourplex with an elevator or just the cost of building a fourplex. I, from all the developers I've spoken with, there seems to be, you know, in Winnipeg, the, the, the need for a fourplex, by the time the unit is ready to go, you can basically buy a house and make mortgage payments in Winnipeg here. It's not like Vancouver, Toronto mortgage payments on a house. What are your thoughts on, are we gonna see a rash of these things go up? Or, or what's your perspective on the fear of fourplex that's out there?
I'm gonna go out on a limb here a little bit and I don't want to be called on it if I'm wrong, but, but right now, what I call stage one of this process, we've taken kind of a blanket approach and, and included everyone in everything and done our best to kind of standardize this across the city of Winnipeg using various kind of litmus tests or accreditations or reasons why we're doing it and where we're doing it. An example, eight hundred meters off of frequent transit or high-frequency transit. I think we're gonna find that we're gonna have to, at stage two, be a little bit more targeted. Where's the infrastructure? Where's the real estate price at a certain dollar per square foot or dollar per unit? And, and take a more targeted approach. I don't think you're gonna see a lot of four-story fourplexes going up. With respect, that'd be a very affluent product. So if there's a fear as to what that's gonna look like, the price of that unit's gonna be so high that I would imagine the consumer's gonna want a beautiful building. And so I don't think that it's something that we should fear. I also don't think it's something that we're gonna see a lot of. I think the market, if it does have the opportunity to build something, it'll be three-story or two-and-a-half-story fourplexes. I think you'll see a lot of triplexes tried, but with the triplex, going from duplex to triplex, there's all of a sudden a whole series of requirements for the storage of water on site that you need to manage. And so I think the story here is gonna be that we've enabled and then the right places, the low-hanging fruit's gonna get pegged off. But during that time, we're gonna realize that we're gonna have to take a more targeted approach. Then maybe that would be a concern. But right now, for example, off Grant Avenue, eight hundred meters takes you to Corden or it takes you up to Taylor, all that real estate's, you know, arguably four hundred and fifty thousand to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy one of those houses. I don't think there's much even in that catchment that's in the three fifty range. You're not gonna see a whole bunch of fourplexes going up on that type of price of real estate. And so it's a boogeyman. It needs one to point to. I don't think it's an issue. Cost of construction will skyrocket going to four stories and adding elevators and doing things like that. Sprinklers, again, it's just gonna skyrocket and I'd counter back to that it's, if that did happen, it would be very affluent product that is being built by people that would want a product that looks very nice.
Thank you. That's, that's a perspective I've got from a lot of people and, yeah, I think it is a bit of a boogeyman, but thanks very much for your input.
Sorry if that's offensive.
Thank you. Next is Councilor Wyatt.
Tim, what do you think the impact is gonna be on starter, single-family, new families who are trying to get into the market? A lot of the area that's being targeted is where starter homes typically are. What do you think is gonna be the impact on pricing for them to get into the housing market potentially?
Well, new construction's more expensive. I mean, as you can add density to a site, you're obviously gonna bring down the cost per unit. In the end, when you're buying an infill product, what has to be considered is the initial cost per door. I think in a lot of cases or some cases here, the, you know, the real estate that we've chosen, based on, like I said, a broad brush approach that used a series of checklist as to why. I think we'll find that a lot of that real estate's too expensive to make this work. I don't think that we're gonna see nothing happen. I just don't think it's gonna be as explosive as everyone expects. And I think that's the right approach, frankly speaking. If there was any, you know, science behind that, which I, I'm not sure that there was, I think that this will be slow and steady and that'll give everybody the chance to ramp this up properly. And I've always kind of stood on the sidelines and said I look forward to stage two when we can, you know, kind of grow a bit and take a targeted approach on this and do what they do in Vancouver, Edmonton, elsewhere, where they, you know, specifically target an area based on infrastructure being available, the right price point for unit of housing that's, you know, potentially gonna be on the market, et cetera, in order to create that price point that you're seeking, Council Wyatt, a cheaper dollar per door per se.
Can I just, can I, can I just challenge you a bit? Like I thought Transcana West, I thought Transcana West was gonna take thirty years. It took fifteen to build up. So, you know, if this takes off, could it have an impact on the value of lots, a single, existing single-family home and the affordability of it, especially in some neighborhoods where it's still affordable? Because it'll drive up value because now you could put greater density on that lot as a right. That's what I'm talking about. And if, number one, just let me say, number one. Number two, let's say the industry, as you know, there's a whole new homebuilders industry out there that didn't exist before and it's developed in the last ten or fifteen years. Let's say this takes off. You know, the cost of construction in many ways is less than a big RMFFM or RMFL project, right? That you can get projects up, it's stick construction, not concrete, and you can get on to the next one. What are your thoughts on all that?
So I got, you know, two perspectives to share. I think you might be right that existing constituents in some cases may benefit and thank each of you for their property values going up. I think conversely, on the other side of that equation, when that real estate's been bought for more than it might have been bought, if an individual family wanted to go into it, now instead three or four families can go into it. I think what you'll find is that when it's been being rented or sold, that now the per-unit price has actually gone down. And so at the back end of that storyboard, four families or three families are gonna win. And on the front end of that storyboard, one family that's been paying taxes for arguably ten, twenty, thirty years, might win a little bit with an appreciation in value. And so it's a, you know, I can see the double-edged sword, but I, I think it strikes positive in both directions.
Well, as we know, UDI formed a subcommittee on this little wall back, so they're taking it quite seriously. What is the impact you think? Let's say it does take off. This product would be in direct competition, I think, with the RMFFF project, products like medium and large, I would say. Would you say that's fair?
It's a different product, but yeah, I think that what it'll do is it'll increase supply in the market.
Right.
Availability. And I know from a macroeconomic perspective, that should help price come down. It is a little bit more complicated to construct on an infill site and there are some, you know, kind of issues to deal with with respect to that, that will always kind of be a little bit more expensive than greenfield. But from the perspective of desirability, they tend to be places that people want to live. And so what I see happening here, I think you're gonna increase the supply nominally, a little bit, not a huge amount. And it will take off. It'll take off probably slowly as people will right-size and fix their widgets through constructing one and then two, then three and then four, and then, you know, fine-tune it all. And I think you'll see in a few years that this becomes a little bit more of a robust environment for all of us to deal with. And for reference, to hit pause, I'm chairing the infill committee for UDI and so I'm directly involved in all this. And I think we'll find that by way of it, we have more housing opportunity across the whole city. And there's gonna be a whole ton of spin-off benefits that'll benefit all types of different things. Transit would be one example. Bicycle use might be another. The environment, if you want to talk about, you know, the associated impacts this could have on the environment. And I think that you'll see too, that you'll have a different variety of housing available that you might not see developed in greenfield because people have to be a little bit more creative here.
Last question. How do we get Charleswood going? It's like this big gray area that nothing's happening there. How do we get that moving? It's kind of, it has great potential.
They've elected the right guy and from what I understand, he's
I always like, I like that a light question at the end, just to, all right, thanks, Tim. See, I see you was kind of falling asleep there, so.
Tim, your response?
What's that?
To the last question?
Oh, I said they've elected the right guy. He's got his eye right on the prize there with the department that he's now chairing. And so I'm sure he'll provide some very, very beneficial solutions to that.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. That concludes questions for you. Appreciate your presentation today.
Thank you for your time today.
Madam Clerk, we'll, we'll ask if there's any others in support?
Yes, correct. Tim was our last registered speaker in support of the application. Is there anyone here whose name hasn't been called and wishes to speak in support? Seeing none.
We'll ask another time.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of this application?
So we, we now have those in opposition. Counselors, Will, we can hear from a few. Yep. Okay, that's a big question. Yeah, we do have a whole list of folks and just want to make it clear that we'll be beginning at nine-thirty tomorrow morning and we'll be hearing from those in, in opposition. We did say five o'clock, so maybe we can hear from the first two. Madam Clerk?
Okay, our first registered, registered speaker in opposition to the application is Kelly Ryback and Kelly's joining us in person.
Following that is Rita Moyer and then the rest will be heard tomorrow. Welcome, Kelly. Five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. A lot of examples today, a lot of discussion. You've heard examples from what's happening in other cities. Everyone they said that was listed does not have our winters. They all have rail transit and they all, and most of them have inner freeways. We don't have any of that. You've Uh, you've heard books being referenced in support of and creating complete communities, et cetera. There's many books showing the failings of those complete communities, and one of them in particular, The Vanishing Automobile and Other Urban Myths, is about Portland, Oregon, which is where the city acquired their consultant to come up with these recommendations. I've spoken to hundreds of people on this, going on RMF rezonings, and we talk about HAF, and it's overwhelming. Eighty-five-plus percent are opposed for the as-of-right, that they've lost influence as to what goes up in their neighborhood and beside them, and they live in fear of that. And that is a crossroads of various demographics throughout, throughout the city, particularly St. James. I would not have bought my bungalow thirty-five years ago if it had had a triplex beside it. I can sit in my living room, overlook the, through the room into the dining room window, and I see sky and trees. I could go in my backyard, look at my neighbor's house, it's the same-sized bungalow, but I can see above it and around it and throughout the other backyards, and I see trees, birds, sky, et cetera. We're enjoying the environment, hear everything that's going in the neighborhood. With this proposal, I would see stucco. And that's what I, not what I bought. It's not the character of the neighborhood. I lose that right to at least have a chance to influence what goes up beside me. In the white shell, if somebody wanted to encroach with a satellite dish, a shed, an expansion to the cottage, or a bunkhouse, they need my approval in their submission to come within ten feet of the property line. Okay? This is my third time here. Self-boroughs told me new construction is not affordable. Meanwhile, we have boarded up buildings that could be restored. We allow buildings to be boarded up for years, where there should be controls on that. The average selling price of residential detached in 2024 by the Winnipeg Regional Real Estate Board was four hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Then I looked at my childhood home, the one I spent most of my years in. I've lived in four bungalows, three of them on cor- uh, four homes, three of them on corner lots. But my childhood home is a one-story side-by-side duplex. Just a couple years ago, I asked my mom, why did we buy duplex? It's all we could afford, and we didn't wanna take any more mortgage risk. That duplex, built in nineteen sixty-seven, is now assessed at two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, thousand sixty-eight square-foot three-bedroom on a three thousand four hundred and seventy-nine square-foot lot, fifty-two-point-four-foot frontage for the one side. Single mom with a young child, has a nice side yard fenced in, they have a dog. With the, what you're planning now, those days will be gone. With the duplex combined, that one lot built in nineteen sixty-seven, has a total front of a hundred and four feet, sixty-six-point-four feet deep, with a thirty-one percent footprint. Under this recommendation, you're going into forty-two-and-a-half to fifty-seven-and-a-half percent footprint. In that neighborhood, nine side-by-side duplexes in a bay with a total of thirty-four buildings making forty-three home units. I can't fathom this du- duplex replaced with a fourplex or side-by-side one, uh, duplexes on much smaller lots. There's been four recent rezoning applications in St. James. These are RMF that I was following. Prior to the application, they sold or were assessed at a hundred and twenty to two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars below the average selling price in the city. They could have been... And one, for over four years, has sat empty, even though it got first reading in September of twenty-twenty-two. I just found out this afternoon by a lady living across this lane, there's squatters in the garage, and the grass hasn't been cut. A two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar mortgage, one thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars a month, versus new rent in any of these complexes is two thousand, eighteen-hundred, two thousand twenty, two hundred dollars a month. As I said in March's council meeting with agreement from several councillors, you're taking affordable, single-detached homes, duplexes, and making them unaffordable rent. As we talked, I said, I actually look forward if there's established builders coming in because there are issues with current builders. But now that there's well-funded real estate developers coming back into this marketplace, there'd be more demand, therefore higher prices. If I can ask, uh, just very briefly, an extension of time?
Two minutes, or what are you looking for? Okay, Counselor Wyatt moves extension for two minutes. All in favor? Contrary? It's lost. Okay.
They said no?
Well, we now have questions?
Okay. Yes.
Counselor Mays?
Yeah, thanks for your, uh, comments. A long day here, so thanks for your patience. Two questions. One was, um, I've seen comments from you in the newspapers about trying to accelerate development without the loss of some input, without, basically, without doing the as-of-right mechanism. So, uh, give you a chance to talk about that, perhaps.
Thank you very much. Right now, the process, there's a hearing, opting for appeal, could go to municipal board, then it goes to first reading, then it's on the developer to come up with the fees of ten percent, et cetera, with, they have to do that within, I think it's one- or two-year time limit. Once they pay that, that's when it goes to second, third reading, then they have time to register with land titles. I've never seen anything debated or addressed or changed from first reading and beyond. So the opportunity could be, at the community committee level, you still have your hearing, but then proceed there to land titles. If they pay their fee, and preferably that they pay their fee with their application, then you do not require the first, second, and third reading process. It can go faster, but you still have the opportunity for the neighborhood to, uh, learn what's going on, and then voice your concerns, opinions, and then adjustments to be made as they have been discussed and granted. I would also ask that with this, there could still be variances, that if it's not in place, that the development procedures bylaw needs to be changed to ensure any variance request goes to the community committee and goes to public hearing following the existing protocol. On this case, no variances.
Okay, thank you. Next question, Counselor Mays?
Yeah, thank you, and I think there'd be some interest here in at least having the, uh, it might be tricky to get rid of as-of-right, given that it's called for as-of-right, but the variances, uh, I know there's been a lot of discussion here, trying to make sure that comes and the public can speak to that. The second question, you, when I saw you this morning, you had a document to hand out, uh, a map of, uh, which I'm assuming is in order, it's a map of all the properties that currently have paved driveways.
So I know that when you come to debate this and make your vote, there could be amendments, you're gonna land somewhere. My basic bone of contention is not only losing the as-of-right, but the extreme of the setbacks and the requirements based on what you can and cannot do. And one of them in particular, where for a fourplex, if you do not have a back lane, you need a sixty-foot-wide lot. That is still gonna be problematic. So what I have, if the suspension of rules, is a map showing all the roads, the residential roads in Winnipeg that have back lanes, that if you were to make the lot requirement wider without a back lane, you're not losing a huge opportunity. The shaded area is that.
Mr. Clerk, I see that you were trying to weigh in on the distribution? Right.
Right, so I've asked suspension of rules, that if this could be distributed, because it was not submitted?
Yes. Yeah. So suspension of the rules to distribute, uh, the item, all in favor? Contrary, carried. Okay, Counselor Mays, nothing further? Counselor Wyatt?
Kelly, if, are you aware that prior to World War II, I could show you houses that still exist in old Transcona that's, that are on twenty-five-foot lots, thirty-foot lots? And back then, the average size of the family was a husband and wife, minimum three kids, maybe a lot more. And, uh, everything seemed to be okay. Matter of fact, the rates of happiness since World War II have not gone up very incrementally, even though the amount of people occupying the same amount of square footage has actually shrunk. Are you aware of that?
No, not only aware of it, that's the house that my father grew up in when they first moved from Toronto, in the North End, a very extremely small house. I know those exist. But we're talking about, though, when you go to as-of-right, you're affecting the character of the home, the character of the neighborhood. And I think we're really targeting the three hundred thousand dollar less home, but you heard a delegate say that they're trying to look for a home in that price range, it's unaffordable, and a lot of those prices are driven up from developers. And if you introduce this, and now the well-funded, large developers now come into the marketplace, now there's more competition, there's gonna be more, uh, offers, and the prices will, I wholeheartedly believe those prices will grow up. And it's not about, it's not about, yes, people have lived in narrow homes with no lots, no side yards.
But it was one of the points you made, so I just wanted to comment on that. My next question is, uh, so you're aware over the last twenty, twenty-five years, the city has surged the market in terms of rezoned land and properties that are available for development, for developers? And it's done exactly what you said, it's actually created a feeding frenzy, as has happened in other cities across Canada that have done it, and drive up values of land. Are, are you aware that the only thing that really addresses that, has been proven in other countries, especially Israel, France, Italy, is to actually, for government to step in and start building affordable housing, rent geared to income, that actually suppresses the market prices from going up? But to have a very aggressive program to ensure the market does not get out of control? That's what those countries do, and they do it successfully. We don't do that in North America. Are you aware of that?
No, I'm aware of that. Uh, my son has lived two years in Sweden, amongst other things. But however, uh, this is, this phase of the Housing Accelerator Fund is not about affordability. It's not about addressing homelessness. It's not about, it does not go anywhere far in addressing age and place, because seniors want either ground level or elevators. And when you introduce an elevator, as I said, this was at a rezoning hearing a couple weeks ago, the developers asked, why are you not going to four stories? Because he's looking at nine units. He said, well, just the elevator adds eighty thousand dollars to the price, which will be reflected in the rental. As far as accessibility, there's nothing that, okay, so many units have to have level thresholds, thirty-six-inch doors, large bathrooms, guard, uh, rails, and we, it was even mentioned Waverly West. My daughter lives in Bridgewater with one of those accessible homes, except the bedrooms, because they're on the second floor.
Thank you.
And are you aware that when the average Winnipeger or Manitoban thinks of, when I say affordable housing, the first image that comes into their mind is a rundown building owned by Manitoba Housing, because they do a horrendous job often of maintaining their product in a lot of vacancy, compared to, let's say, Winnipeg Housing, which has many rent geared to income, uh, units? And you wouldn't even know that they are a not-for-profit, non-private corporation that's offering affordability to many Winnipegers today. Are you aware of that? That we can build affordable housing units that are beautiful and well-maintained?
Yes, I'm aware of the fifty projects that got combined, fifty, or number of projects that got the fifty million dollars, ten million going to the Bay. There's one in St. James at the present R and R restaurant location, uh, that's, uh, Shoal Lake North Forty Project.
I can show you one on my board, ninety-two units on Chrisland Street, beautiful building, Ray Wan designed it.
Some are market rate at close to two thousand, and some are at seventy, less seventy percent as Manitoba Housing. And the mode shift and the less than one vehicle per unit, that is not taking place. That's not a fault. You're not close to meeting your mode shift targets, where you have infill, you have house, uh, parking problems. And I even question if, when, if property actually goes out and visits these sites, because two-two Duffield, uh, property department was not aware that there's one-hour restricted parking right across, right acro- right on that street, and for nine blocks around Deer Lodge Center. Uh, another example, that four-seventy-five Seaton was a single home built, a thousand-square-foot home disappeared in eighteen hundred and seventy-five, square-foot monster showed up with... If the orientation had been different for the driveway and the front entrance, a tree would have been saved on the boulevard. But where they put the driveway, there's a tree right in the middle. So you wanna talk about protecting trees, and there's gonna be a delegate on that, and ours is Winnipeg? There's, there's issues. It's probably the second biggest threat to our beautiful canopy is infill housing.
Thank you. Kelly, any further questions?
Thanks, Kelly. Thanks for coming.
Okay, seeing none? We appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Final delegate for today, Madam Clerk? Rita?
Rita Morier, who's joining us via Zoom. Rita, welcome.
Yes, good afternoon, and, and thank you for staying so alert this late in the day to, to listen to what I have to say. My name is Rita Morier, and I live in Glenwood. Our counselor is Brian Mays. I will be speaking to item one today, and for years, I have lived, years, the infill experience in Glenwood. I do believe that construction practices can be improved, and I do appreciate Tim Comack's, um, comments regarding maybe the industry's self-monitoring and the industry's self-disciplining itself with regards to, uh, construction behavior and construction practices. I do believe that residents need access to design information and building timelines, while immediate neighbors should have the builder contact details for when urgent issues arise. I don't think you can expect, uh, general residents to know that they have to go to the city of Winnipeg website permits page to find out what is happening. That is not effective communication. And I think if you want to prevent a lot of headaches in the future, we have to go the communication route. Much can be said about the livability of an infill construction zone, but I have five minutes here today, and I want to center around trees and pervious surfaces. So infill development in the Glenwood area has led to significant tree canopy loss, which adversely impacts climate resilience. This will likely be the case citywide, and we just heard about that one tree in the middle of the driveway being eliminated. We will lose more canopy if we consider as-of-right fourplex, um, development, especially if we don't modify some of the issues around that. I do have recommendations or thoughts on this. Number one, I would recommend that we have an arborist report. Developers should be required to submit an arborist report with tree protection plans for existing mature trees and for those that straddle the property line. Mature tree protection should always, always, always be prioritized over new plantings, as new sapling trees will take thirty or forty years to provide us with the environmental services. There, these required tree protection plans and root zone protection plans should be arborist-led and monitored. Directional drilling, that would be my second recommendation. This is part of the tree root protection plan. Directional drilling should be mandated when installing utilities to safeguard tree roots. This avoids the open trenching that we sometimes see. This also protects the pedestrians that use the sidewalks by minimizing sidewalk disruption and landscape destruction. It might be a little bit more expensive, but we're protecting the landscape and we're protecting the tree root zone. Number three, set and enforce landscaping standards. Building permits should remain open until all landscaping requirements are met. We have had properties in Glenwood, three, four, five, six years post-development, that still do not have the trees that were on the original development plans. We also have yards full of crushed stone that do not have trees, do not support vegetation, and only create heat islands. Permits should remain open until all development is complete, as per the submitted plan. We should hold developers, developers accountable for their landscaping and tree planting plans. This I see as an enforcement issue. And number four, my comment about pervious surfaces, we would, I think pervious surfaces would be really important to have for parking, parking spaces and pave, and all pavement. Effective watershed management is critical for retaining water where it actually falls. The new bylaws should be amended to enforce pervious materials in walkways, parking areas, and landscaping. By facilitating water infiltration into the ground, pervious surfaces will enhance the, the recharging of groundwater levels and alleviate the pressure on stormwater systems. This will support vegetation, will support biodiversity, will help manage water runoff and offload city infrastructure. The pervious surfaces issue, I think, was addressed by Hazel, and she mentioned, uh, a, a wheel path and ribbon pavement, yes?
Rita, your time is up. Do you require a minute or two more?
I need about thirty seconds.
Okay, let's, okay, let's... Okay, let's, okay, let's, okay. Counselor Rollins is moving extension for one minute? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Rita, I'm sorry, the time is up for your presentation, but there, there can be some questions from counsel.
Thank you.
Is there any questions for Rita? Counselor Mays?
Maybe Counselor Rollins can go first.
Okay, Counselor Rollins?
Very interested in her last thirty seconds, Madam Speaker.
Question, please?
Can she explain?
Counselor Rollins, question?
I'm very interested in her last thirty seconds. Can she explain?
Okay, Rita?
Yes, thank, thank you, that, thank you, Madam. Pervious surfaces, I do think they are important. The, I know that Hazel mentioned ribbon pavement and some sort of other sort of cement stripes for people to park on. I don't think that language is quite strong enough to have, for, for pervious surfaces in, in infill development. We really need to have more pervious surfaces, not less pervious surfaces. Other cities actually have impervious area levies or taxes that actually reflect the amount of area that is impervious, and thus contributing to stormwater runoff. We, we need to keep water where it falls. We need the land to absorb the water to alleviate some of the stresses on the city infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. Next question, Counselor Mays?
Thanks, thanks Rita, for your persistence over the years, and you've certainly lived the experience of some of the problems that have come from this construction. But to your credit, I don't think you concentrated on that today. You're looking forward. You have comments in the brief, the brief that was circulated to all councillors, about height, and they kind of echo some of the concerns that Counsel Chambers and Counsel Allard and I've talked about a real community committee, that we may, that the way we've drafted this right now, the thirty-nine-foot thing is, is etched in stone, basically. That's, that's the federal requirement. But for threeplexes and fourplexes outside of there, there's still some, still some maneuverability, I think. The infill guidelines, to end the day where we started with Mr. Clerk and Mr. Mahay, the infill guidelines sort of reflected a compromise, so we actually lowered some of the height limits in the mature communities. And I think we do want to keep encouraging development in the mature communities, rather than
Question, Counselor Mays?
Talk to us a bit about what you're saying about the height limits for the threeplexes, the fourplexes, because I know Counsel Chambers and Allard and I have, have some concerns about that, as it's, the inequity that's being set up with thirty feet in the mature communities and thirty-five elsewhere, and maybe we need to rebalance that. So, if you can talk a bit about your concerns about height?
Well, my concerns about, you know, when the, when the infill guidelines were created, that was a fair compromise. A lot of work, a lot of work went into that regarding height issues. I would tend to want to abide by those infill guidelines for mature communities.
Thank you. Any further questions, Counselor Mays?
Right, and I mean, aside from the thirty-nine-foot change, we're going to thirty feet from twenty-eight in the mature communities for threeplexes and fourplexes, the fourplexes that aren't within eight-hundred meters of transit. So, I guess it's just food for thought for tomorrow to discuss about, frankly, why thirty-five in some of the mature communities if we've successfully, as a compromise, lowered to thirty in, in these mature communities. But thank you for your comments on that, and any further, you're right, there was a lot of work on the infill guidelines. Any further points you wanted to make that you weren't able to make due to the, due to the time limitations?
Well, thank you, and thank you for asking that. And I think the big take-home message, I guess, today with that would be that the city really needs to look at enforcement issues. I mean, they have, they have bylaws, they have permits that open and close, they have, they have rules, they just don't have the, the resources to enforce those rules. And I would like to see some allocation to, to the enforcement of some of those, the allocation of resources to some of those enforcement strategies.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further questions, Rita, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presence. Mr. Mayor?
Madam Speaker, that the public hearing be adjourned to June 3, 2025, at 9:30 a.m. in Council Chamber, here at 510 Main Street.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? That's carried. Mr. Clerk, any need for roll call? Yes, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Madam Speaker, Counselor Sharma, it's worship Mayor Gillingham, Councillors Allard, Crowadi, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, Eadie, Gilroy, Luke, Mays, Orliko, Rollins, Santos, and Wyatt.